Welcome, ladies and gentlemen, to the April 4th, 2023 Redevelopment Commission. We can all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Yes.
My pledge is to give away the United States of America and its people for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please, Margot.
Good show.
Sorry, show, I'm sorry.
Mr. Carnegie?
Here.
Ms. Rivera?
Here.
Mr. Recupido is absent.
And I, he asked me to state that he is not here tonight and he, their new baby, they had to take to the University of Chicago.
That's right. Keep them in your prayers.
And I'm gonna ask for prayers in the town council.
Okay, thanks, Bob.
Mr. Miller?
Present.
Ms. Sheban?
Here.
Mary Pascal?
Here.
Mr. Vassar?
Here.
Mr. Sharp?
Here.
Mr. Foreman?
Present.
Ms. Vanberg is absent. Mr. Salata?
Present.
Mr. Austin?
Present.
Ms. Hayduk is present. Ms. Nagy?
Present.
So, ladies and gentlemen that are here tonight, perhaps you haven't been to very many Redevelopment Commission meetings over the years. We always have an award for the Redevelopment Commission called Explore Every Day. It's a community recognition award typically goes out to businesses. Tonight, the first item on our docket here is to welcome Hoosier Pulse Plus, Mr. Mike Quirk, and also Lynn Sarkisian. Sarkis- Sarkizian. Thank you, sorry. I have my Apple i Pad zoomed in far enough, Lynn. So if you guys would like to come up to the podium and talk about your business and tell us about what you've got going on, that would be super.
Great, thank you so much. First of all, I want to thank Nick Recupido for nominating us. I was teasing Nick, I said, "Well, that's great," I said, "we got the award," and I says, "Do we get the pick of the Southern Caribbean or the Eastern Caribbean?" So Nick made sure to tell me the call was being recorded, so it was all good.
Hantumbo right on the south end of the lake might be more suspicious.
Well, we're really happy to be in Cedar Lake. The support we've gotten from the town has been unbelievable. So we do want to thank the Redevelopment Commission for recognizing us and please come in and see us. We do, you know, here's the advertiser, we do UPS, FedEx, Post Office, we do all kinds of printing, laminating, both linen and iron oderies and that, so we're very shredding, thanks Lynn. We're very happy to be in town, so we're really, really pleased, so thank you.
And you're a Sox fan?
Well, yeah, sometimes.
Okay, so I'd like to read something here for you, Mike and Lynn, and then we'd like to take a photo, but I'd like to present on behalf of the RDC certificate recognition. So on behalf of the RDC, we'd like to express our thanks to you and your team for their community service, you provided the town of Cedar Lake and Hoosier Pulse Plus. Our town motto is "Explore Every Day." This has multiple meanings, but one of which, I'm convinced, is to explore the features of the town and linger with the family and friends. Your business enables residents and visitors of our town to explore and linger before and after visiting your friendly establishment, which beckons folks to linger with personal friendly service that they receive. During the March 7th, 2023 Redevelopment Commission, the commissioners nominated and approved your business for commendation, wishing to highlight your achievements and your community support. Hoosier Pulse Plus supports various entities and activities in town as well as providing great printed materials for the various community events, supporting local businesses and organizations such as Hanover Central Organizations, the Lions Club, veterans groups, and more, and helping whenever you can. Thank you for treating everyone, including pets, welcome in your business, apparently, and you treat them all like family. To that end, we remit a resolution of thanks to you and your staff for all the hard work and your hometown values, which align with and defines the heart of Cedar Lake and follows the mission of honoring and celebrating families within our community. Thank you for the contribution to Cedar Lake. And I'd like to now come down and present a certificate to you.
And we're all gonna go down?
And if everybody would like to come down, absolutely. If it's just Bob, that's fine.
No, we didn't need everybody, because we're a team.
Yeah, you're a team.
Thank you, Bob.
Come on down. Come on down.
Well, we could have that come up.
That might have been.
So come on up, let's see.
What's that, Bob? You're gonna get a team.
Yeah, Bob, if you want to resist that, I'll.
Go.
Yeah.
Bob doesn't miss a photo, does he? Yeah. I think so. Somebody else? And then you can get a photo out of hand. I did that today?
Did you?
Oh, we should. Real close. You good? Thank you.
Thank you.
Many years of difficult business.
Thank you.
You guys are great. I love you guys. Thank you. Hey, we'll get you back. We'll get you back, come on.
Okay, moving right along. Next item, consent agenda. Approval of March 7th, 2023 regular meeting minutes and claims fund number 404, fund 804. And let me see if I can pull those up. Some legal services and a facade grant, Summer Winds Commercial, the total being $24,346. $19,000 of that was Summer Winds Commercial developer agreement for the utilities from the past, as well as Verdas Group.
What is that for?
For $4,098, and the dates on this were 3/8 through 3/31. So that total $24,346. Do we have any questions from the board members and/or a motion?
And with a motion to approve?
Motion by Joe.
Second.
Second by Colleen. Roll call, please.
Mr. Carnegie?
Yes.
Ms. Rivera?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Sheban?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Mr. Foreman?
Yes, motion carries six to zero. Moving along, do we have any written communications? I did not have any in my packet. Chris, are you aware of any?
No.
Okay, Margot, there's nobody on, okay, nobody online? Mr. Austin, do you have anything?
I do, thank you. It's that time of the year statutorily for the Redevelopment Commission to begin its work for next year TIP funds. You have two TIP districts here in our town. They will be the subject of resolutions you'll see next month to capture that increment for purposes of debt service and responsibilities to which TIP has been created. They'll also be receiving shortly a report, which is required to be provided. Actually, there are two reports that they meld into one statutorily also. So there's a lot of activity coming up. I will be working with both Chris and your clerk treasurer Jennifer on those items, and you can expect them to be coming shortly.
Okay.
Anybody else? RDC members, any other comments?
Nope.
Do we have any public comment for the Redevelopment Commission? Any public comment?
Thank you.
I'd like to offer a suggestion, next time someone is speaking like that, maybe you have a microphone, we could not hear anything.
Test one, two, you can't hear.
I got you.
I think they're talking about when the judge gets the video, maybe?
Oh, okay, yes, sir, I've had, sir. Good advice. Anybody else? Going once, twice, public comment is closed. It's about 6:42, the town council meeting will start at 7:00. This meeting is now adjourned.
As we go to prayer tonight, please remember Nick Recupido's baby Valerie as she's hospitalized right now. Our sister community to the north, St. John, had a painful loss in their police department yesterday as they had to put down their canine dog match. So we want to keep them in our prayers as well, as well as the Chicago fire officer who was killed in the line of duty this morning. Let's go to prayer. Our God, we're very thankful for community, for the opportunity that we have to come and have civil discourse and find ways and strategies to make our community even better and brighter. We're mindful this week of a Passover feast that celebrates community being protected and watched over in the face of death and terror. We're mindful of the end of this week, butting new life and offering the hope and promise of resurrection. We ask that you would also breathe new life and resurrection and protection upon all of us. May what we do and say here give you honor and glory. May we build better community and may those who serve this community in harm's way and in safety continue to be able to provide that care under your loving hand. We ask that you would now bless us with not only your presence, but your wisdom and guidance. Amen.
Thank you very much, Pastor. Please remain standing as we go to the pledge and a moment of silence for the items that the people that Pastor Ken mentioned and also the shooting victims down in the school in Nashville.
(Inaudible) United States of America and the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will call Margot?
Yes, Robert Carnian.
Before I answer, if you weren't aware, Nick Recupido is one of our town council members. And as Pastor Ken said, they're with their newborn baby up at the University of Chicago. So they wanted me to look that up. So I'm just mentioning that again as I did in the RDC meeting. And I say I am here.
Thank you, Bob.
Julie Rivera, here.
Nick Recupido.
Ralph Miller.
Present.
Colin Sheehan.
Present.
John Foreman.
Present.
Richard Sharp.
Present.
Jennifer Sandberg, staffed.
First of all, uh...
Present.
David Austin.
Present.
And Margot, maybe.
Mr. Chairman, can I say something real quick?
Yes.
What a wonderful crowd. I wish and hope everybody continues to come to meetings year after year. The first or the first and third Tuesday of the month, our town council meetings, this is awesome. This is the best way to stay informed. It's our town, it's our government, it's ours, meaning everybody here. So if anybody wants to sign up next year for boards and commissions and things like that, please get involved. It's a great learning experience. I encourage everyone to try to give it their all. Thank you.
I'd like to begin by amending the current agenda. Would we have a motion to, Bob, you will make that motion.
To amend the agenda.
Chris, I'll probably...
Yes, I'll make a motion to amend the agenda so we can have an appointment with the Plan Commission.
Thank you, Bob. We have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Colleen. Roll call. Any discussion?
I just want to mention, the reason we have this opening on the Plan Commission is the person that served for seven years as a Democrat, because boards and commissions, many of them, you have to have an equal amount, Republican and Democrat. They served as a Democrat for seven years and then in February signed up to run as a Republican. So that's why we have an opening. So hopefully we can fill it tonight.
Thank you, Julie. We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Robert Carnian.
Yes.
Julie Rivera.
Yes.
Ralph Miller.
Yes.
Colin Sheehan.
Yes.
John Foreman.
Yes.
Richard Sharp.
Yes. And we'll move that to item seven under new business. Perfect. Thank you. Public comment on agenda items only. Public comment, agenda items only. Public comment, this agenda items only.
Yeah.
Name address, please.
Jeff Beal from 10240 West 103rd Avenue.
Thank you.
I said on one of the agenda items is a motion to talk about purchasing four new police vehicles.
Yes, sir.
And I just wondered, is there a procedure? Do we go by mileage? Or are these four additional vehicles? Are they taking any other vehicles?
I'm sure they're taking some out. Chief could probably speak better.
They're replacement vehicles for vehicles that have 110-plus thousand miles on. Then what do you do with those? Um, we try to keep them for pool cars. Or if we want to get rid of them, we sell them on GovDeals, which is a registered government website that people can auction the vehicles off on. Are these cars or these? They're social cars. Cars, okay.
Dodge Chargers, all of them, aren't they?
Um, the new ones are Durangos. The ones that we would be getting rid of, some are Fords and probably a couple of Dodge Chargers. And is this a budgeted item every year?
It is budgeted every year.
Okay. Thank you very much.
And we have a capital fund that we try to keep up on for these types of things.
Okay.
And also you've worked with the training in Plainfield, right?
For?
For giving the vehicles a...
Yeah, we've donated, donated four cars over the 20-plus years up here to the academy for Evo training for new recruits. And then they give us $100 of credit hours for training for our officers down in Little Caesars.
Very good.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other public comment on agenda items? See none? Consent agenda. Claims, all town funds, $235,745.28. Waste water operating, $109,632.5. Sewer sinking, $440,600. Water utility, $63,786.85. Stormwater, $15,971.16. Payroll for 330-23 and 331-23, $266,021.02. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion by Colleen.
I'll second it.
Second by Ralph. Any discussion?
Yes. Margot, you mentioned there's one spot in there that needs to be changed to travel.
Yeah.
On one of the claims. And then, Tim, on the claim that says LS8, that means lift station number eight, and that's for the work over there by Corby.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Parts not work. I mean, that was for equipment. We've done the work ourselves.
Well, it just said LS8, and so I just want that clarified. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. We've got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Robert Carnian.
Yes.
Julie Rivera.
Yes.
Ralph Miller.
Yes.
Colin Sheehan.
Yes.
John Foreman.
Yes.
Richard Sharp.
Yes. Motion carries six zero. Ordinances and resolutions. Ordinance number 1455, annexation of two additional small parcels into Lakeside South. This is the introductory reading. Chris?
So this is an introductory reading for two small parcels that the Shilling Development Group have acquired to the west of their annexation, the previous annexation, which is called Lakeside South currently. We consider this spike strip, it's a very narrow and long piece of property that spans the western boundary of that particular piece of property. It's approximately 4.1 acres of land.
And it's 70, about 2,700.
Yeah, it's a very awkward, narrow.
I couldn't believe it when I looked at it.
Thank you, Chris. John, could you read the ordinance, please?
I'd be happy to. Town of Steel Lake, Lake County, Indiana, ordinance number 1455. An ordinance and a consent against use land to the Town of Steel Lake, Lake County, Indiana, and all matters related thereto.
Thank you, John. We've had the reading of the ordinance and an explanation of the ordinance by Chris. Do we have any discussion?
No, that was, it was good to know that that was out there. Bob always reminded him at Plan Commission meetings about that strip of land. It's kind of one of those things that, you know, nobody ends up owning until somebody buys land on the outside somewhere.
It's like we've got the two houses on Parrish that aren't in town. Crazy.
That's all I have.
Okay. Thank you, John. Do we have a motion to approve? Can you get a record? Motion by Ralph.
Second.
Second by Bob. Discussion? Roll call.
Robert Carnian.
Yes.
Julie Rivera.
Yes.
Ralph Miller.
Yes.
Colin Sheehan.
Yes.
John Foreman.
Yes.
Richard Sharp.
Yes. Motion carries six zero.
(Inaudible).
New business, issue of the purchase of four additional police department vehicles. This came with a favorable recommendation from the Board of Safety on March 22, 2023, and the recommendation was five zeros, I recall. Chief?
Yes, Mr. President, Council. This is just a recommendation or a request for you to allow the legislature to advertise for financing for the new vehicles. That'll take about 10 days to request the financing. Once that decision is made, that'll, then it'll come back in front of you in the next meeting for the approval of the financing.
Thank you, Chief. This is just like we stated earlier, this is in just a rotation and already been budgeted for and everything.
Yes, sir. We had a meeting with Corby and Jen and Chris from time to time to ensure that the money's there.
Okay. Thank you. And Corby is our financial advisor. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask a chief question?
Yes.
What outfit did you end up going with?
Vehicle-wise?
Yes.
Dodge Durangos.
The purchasing from?
Thomas Dodge.
Thomas?
Okay, yeah. Thank you. Thank you. Do we have a motion to approve the consideration of purchase of four department vehicles for the full department?
I'll second.
Motion by Bob, second by Colleen. Discussion? Roll call, Margot?
Robert Carnian.
Yes.
Julie Rivera.
Yes.
Ralph Miller.
Yes.
Colin Sheehan.
Yes.
John Foreman.
I would prefer to have tried to get this thing from our town. I realize that pricing is everything, but we really need to make a conscious effort to try to buy from our local dealer.
We did.
Oh, we did.
We were forced to do it.
So thank you.
You can't get them, can you?
Um, we've had some discussion with them. They understand some of the nuances for government vehicles. So I think next year there's a good possibility that they will be able to compete with what we can get from these other companies that provide vehicles to government entities.
Excellent. They employ people in our town.
Yeah.
They pay taxes in our town, even if we find a way to, you know...
We've been using them quite a bit this last month. So they've been working...
You have to look at the claims, their service.
Yeah, I saw that. And we've been taking them to them to do our service stuff. So they've, we've had a lot of vehicles that had issues because of mileage.
Yeah. Thank you.
And Richard Sharp.
Yes.
Did John vote? He had a yes, Bob.
Motion carries six zero. Consider the employee assistance program through Franciscan Alliance. Chief, you want to talk about this, please?
I will. So I'll just go through this letter that I drafted to you so the public can hear it. So in January of 2023, the police department brought in a social worker, an intern. Her name's Mona. She's sitting to the left over here with me. Who was completing her master's degree at IUN. This was our third intern over the years, and each, each year we have them work on a specific item for the police department. This, this year our intern Mona was tasked with assisting us in developing a wellness program that goes along with our policy manual, which, which is new. The purpose behind this policy was to provide guidance on establishing and maintaining a proactive wellness program for the department and its members. The wellness program was intended to be holistic approach to the members' well-being and encompass aspects of physical fitness and mental health and overall wellness. So in our conversation, we realized that the town didn't actually have an EAP or an employee assistance program with the police department and respectively with the fire department as we use the same policy manuals through Lexipol. So knowing that this policy would need to be updated, we took the opportunity to reach out to a bunch of providers to develop a game plan on implementing an EAP, EAP employee assistance program for the police and fire. While working on this, we realized that this would be a better fit for all town employees to have this program. So over the past few months, Sarah, my administrative assistant, Mona, Captain Early, standing up in the back there, and I interviewed several potential companies to assist us in developing this EAP program. These companies were Franciscan Health Perspectives, Heartland, Lexipol, Unum, which is our, one of our insurance companies, and our insurance company provider, Anthem. Many of these programs appear to be really good, but we found that they had a lot of backend charges. And our, our goal behind this was to be as least costly as possible for the town. We learned that Unum already had provided a service to us, but unfortunately, the majority, about 99% of the police and fire are currently on the 77th pension fund. And so we don't have long-term disability with Unum, so we don't get to use that, that program to do that. Anthem has a good program, which is our current insurance, but the biggest question was always, what if our insurance provider changes and the EAP goes away? So with all of that, we determined that our best fit would be to go through Franciscan Health in Crown Point. They would, they provide all of what we were looking for and most of the things that we're looking for with no additional cost. You can see the breakdown on the second page that Mona put together, which is a comparison tracker. It just shows the different companies, what they offer, and so on and so forth. They also have 12 different locations for assistance in the region, and they offer what's called a backdoor entry for public safety individuals. So that if they need to go in and talk to somebody, they can request that they go in through the back door and that nobody sees them, they can have their conversation. Once we determined that Franciscan was the best provider, we looked into the costs. Again, originally it was meant for police and fire, which would have been about $36.60 per employee for the entire year. And at that time, it was about 38 employees, including Chief Wilkenny and I staff, which would have been about $1,390. Once we spoke with the town hall staff, specifically Margot and Chris about this, we realized that it was best fit the entire town and all its employees. So that, that actually brought the cost down with the 82 employees to $32.76 per employee for the entire year, not per month, that's for a whole year, for a total cost for the whole year of $2,686. Now, we also have had conversation about maybe part timers, because Chief Wilkenny has many part timers. That's just something that we'll have to negotiate or talk to them about with the part time, because they may have full-time employment that doesn't, that they already have EAP. So what I'm requesting is that the town enter into agreement with Franciscan for the EAP program. This would be a yearly contract, so it allows us to reevaluate it every year to ensure that we're utilizing it and it's getting, we're getting out of it what we need. So that if we're not, then we can get out of that by the end of the year, and it's at a very, very minimal cost. Mona, did I leave anything out?
No, nothing.
Um, some of the things that you got with the packet on Franciscan are some cost summaries on page three. You've got what that Franciscan offers. And the very last page was their entire EAP program, which they will comment and help each of the police and fire and town hall staff and public works develop that EAP program. And just on the side note, my, my administration staff and several firefighters went to a post-traumatic stress training at the MAC Center about a month ago and listened to a police officer, firefighter, and a Marine Corps officer, a Marine Corps veteran, all within the same, same, same person. Did this in his whole career. That was crazy. It was crazy. But we listened to the post-traumatic stress that he went through, just on the everyday calls that we see in the public and the things that we do, and how it was affecting not only his personal life with his wife and his kids, but his life on station and whether alcohol got involved and things of that nature. So Chief Wilkenny and I are really adamant about developing this program to help to ensure our police have a way to help themselves if need be, can self-report, or that we can get them into something if we find that they're having struggles in some area. So for a very minimal cost, I'm hoping that the town will...
Thank you for all your work. Mona, thank you for all your research into this. Thank you very much.
She did an amazing job, yes.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask a question?
Sure.
Mona, how was, how was it working here?
Oh, I love it interning here. I actually live in a community. I've been here since 2001. So it's not just, you know, an internship. This is my, these are my people. So I want to do everything I can for the police and fire and the residents here as much as I can.
I think it's great. I think with, you know, mental health and the depression and especially for employees' kids and things like that, I think the time has come where people need to be able to reach out and the confidentiality of it's pretty good.
Well, it's really awesome that you said it, sir. Because we're hoping that next year, once Mona gets her master's degree, that we can bring her on and on staff with the town.
Oh, wow.
That she will be able to actually call out and help the public when they have a problem. They can reach out to her. She can get avenues of direction to help if there's issues within your family, if there's issues within the town. She's gonna, she'll watch calls that the police are going on to see the same consecutive calls at the residence. She's gonna reach out to them to see if she can help them, to see what the... She's gonna reach out to them to see if she can help them, to see what the actual issue is, whether it's alcohol-related, drug-related, or, you know, a man and a woman just can't get along, which happens. So, that'll be our goal. It's becoming a big trend in law enforcement, especially in the region right now. There's about five, I don't know, I think, in total in the northern half of Indiana that are employed by the town and by the police department, so.
And my last question, and maybe this is for Chris, since of Margot, which fund are we paying?
So, we had a, monthly this year, we had a decrease in our health insurance cost, so this would come out of the health insurance line.
Super. Where it belongs.
Decrease in health insurance. That's kind of unusual.
Thank you. Okay, thanks, Chris. Thanks, Chief. Thanks, Mona. Do we have a motion to approve? Motion by Colleen. Second by Julie. Discussion? Roll call, Margot.
Robert Carnian.
Yes.
Julie Rivera.
Yes.
Ralph Miller.
Yes.
Colin Sheehan.
Yes.
John Foreman.
Yes.
Richard Chark.
Yes. Motion carries six zero. Item three. Consider moving forward with the Police K-9 program. Favorable recommendation from the Board of Safety on March twenty-second, twenty twenty-three. Chief, you want to?
Sure.
Chief tonight.
Yeah, we got a lot tonight. So, in November of twenty twenty-two, I was approached again by my administrative assistant. She volunteers in a local business here called Protecting K-9 Heroes. She spoke with the owner, Stacy, there and expressed some interest for the police department to get back into K-9 world. The last dog that we had was passed away in two thousand and eight, which was my dog from cancer, and since then, we haven't replaced the program. In Cedar Lake's history, we've had six K-9s, and so we showed that interest. While speaking with Stacy, she mentioned to Sarah that she had a lady that wanted to donate a program to a community, and since Stacy was in our community and has a business in our community, she reached out to us first. So, this was in November before we got our budgets back, and I said, you know, I didn't budget this out for my budget next year, so I would have to wait till January to see what's in our budget, what we got approved for from the state, and to see if the money's there. So, I didn't want to say yes, and then we didn't have the money to do it. So, after meeting with her, Commander Kidd sent out an email to the department staff to see who was interested. We had five interested candidates. So, in January, after we received our expenditure reports from the clerk's office, Sarah and I would have the ability to talk and look at the budget to see what it was going to cost for us. Ultimately, the federal guidelines for overtime, when we have to pay them for their half-hour block time, is about all it's going to cost. Everything else that is related to this K-9 is being donated. We set up interviews. I wanted to do it impartial to ensure that it was not a favoritism issue, so I brought in three different K-9 programs from the area. They did impartial interviews and
Interviews with who?
With the five officers that were interested.
I thought you were saying interview the dogs.
Wanted to interview with the five officers that were interested. They did a tally score on their own and then compiled that together. All five of the interviewees that were involved all picked the same person as their number-one candidate. That person is right here in the back. Ben, would you please stand up for me? This is Officer Ben Tomko. He was selected to be the K-9 handler for the town of Cedar Lake. As you know, he's a new officer with us, been three years with us now, and his lovely wife, Morgan, is sitting there next to him, his boss. Well, Ben was selected. The other, what we stipulated we had from Stacy was that she wanted to use a company called FM K-9, which is in Michigan. I wanted to visit the location, since I'm a former K-9 handler, to ensure that it was a place that we wanted to send our officer. So, Ben and I went up there about two months ago, sat down and talked with the owner of the facility, looked at several of the dogs, looked at how they handle the dogs, the rotation, ensuring that they did a good job, and I was very impressed, very impressed with it. It's only about an hour and a half away. Included in the training is a residence where the K-9 handlers stay together, so the departments don't have to pay for hotel. So, that's all included in this training. Ultimately, with the package in total, it'll be about twenty-four thousand dollars in donated funds to the town of Cedar Lake, including a brand-new kennel, the dog, the program. The only thing I have to pay for is this training and a little food while he's there, but I'm hoping to wash dishes while he's there, so we won't have to pay too much. We have a company that wants to donate it from South County, that wants to donate a bulletproof vest, and we're getting free food and grooming services from a local business, not in town, but really close to town, for the duration of the dogs.
Wow, that's impressive.
Yeah.
So, the person who's training is from Pennsylvania?
She is from Pennsylvania. Once we're approved here, he goes to the training and comes to the road, and we'll have us, we'll have him in here with his new dog. So, I forgot the last thing. The only other thing that was required was the dog's name had to be Johnny, named after
Yeah, I love that name.
Named after, not Mr. Foreman, but named after her deceased brother that passed away from a drug overdose. So, she's going to fly in from Pennsylvania to do a presentation at a council meeting, if you guys approve it. So, out the door, the police department may have to pay over an entire year, just under ten grand in overtime for his grooming time, which is required by federal law. We have to give him half hour a day to feed and groom the dog by law, because it's something that's required, so.
You've got that in your budget?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you, Chief.
Very, very good job. You're really good, Chris.
Did I miss anything? You good?
Great job, everybody.
Chris, everything good?
It's really good.
Okay, very good.
You will see on your next agenda, Dave has prepared an ordinance for a non-reverting fund for the grant money distributed.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you, Dave. We heard Dave, we heard the explanation of the K-9 program. Do we have a motion for approval?
So moved. I'll second Bob's motion.
Motion by Bob, second by John. Discussion?
Dog's got to be named Johnny.
Of course it does. Of course it does. Very good. Roll call, please, Margot.
Robert Carnian.
Yes.
Julie Rivera.
Yes.
Ralph Miller.
Yes.
Colin Sheehan.
Yes.
John Foreman.
Yes.
Richard Chark.
Yes. Motion carries six zero. Item four. Considering, consider approving the police department and fire department to use protein tactical performance to provide services available in lieu of working well. This came with a favorable recommendation from the Board of Safety on March twenty-second, twenty twenty-three. Chief, Chief, uh?
I'll take that one.
Okay.
So, the town had met with one of its providers, IPEP, and they had brought this company to our attention, is appropriate for police and fire members, specifically for rehabilitation services, and it is the desire of the town and on recommendation of IPEP to start using protein tactical where appropriate in lieu of working well for those services that have overlapped. There are services that will still be provided by working well, but we would prefer that with protein tactical focus on police and fire and specialization in that field that we utilize them for that service, for those services.
Very good. Thank you, Chris. We heard the explanation of protein tactical. Do we have a motion for approval?
I'll make a motion for approval for the police and fire department to use protein tactical.
Thank you, John. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Colleen. Discussion? Roll call, Margot.
Robert Carnian.
Yes.
Julie Rivera.
Yes.
Ralph Miller.
Yes.
Colin Sheehan.
Yes.
John Foreman.
Yes.
Richard Chark.
Yes. Motion carries six zero. Number five. Consider approving the police department's emergency hire of Nicholas Einhardt. Favorable recommendation from the Board of Safety on March twenty-second, twenty twenty-three.
Yes, Mr. President, Council. So, as you recall, we had an officer that resigned to go work in the civilian world. Out of the blue, we were unexpected, so we needed to do an emergency hire. We did applications, interviewed with the Board of Safety and the police department interview board, and we selected Nicholas Enyard. He is a forty-year veteran from Maryville Police Department at this time, a resident of Lowell, and we would like to proceed and move forward in hiring him as the new police officer.
Is he in the room today?
He's not.
Oh, okay.
He's not. He will be at the meetings meeting. We wanted to get your approval.
Thank you, Chief. Do we have a motion to approve the hiring of the new police officer?
So moved.
Motion by John?
I'll second it.
Second by Ralph. Discussion? Roll call.
Robert Carnian.
Yes.
Julie Rivera.
Yes.
Ralph Miller.
Yes.
Colin Sheehan.
Yes.
John Foreman.
Yes.
Richard Chark.
Yes. Motion carries six zero. Item six. Acceptance of the Kriegel easement. Dave, do you want to talk about this one?
This is part of your Westside Sewer Interceptor project. It's based two parcel that was the last parcel needed to undertake and complete that project. I do have the original. The transaction has been concluded.
Transaction's finished. Very good. Thank you.
My recommendation would be a motion and action here in the public meeting to approve and accept the conveyed parcel.
Thank you, Dave.
And just as there are so many people in the audience, Mr. Chairman, if I can explain what that is. So, the Westside Sewer Interceptor project is essentially going from the flume that the town of Cedar Lake owns off one hundred and sixty-fifth and Lake Morris, and we've been buying, we had a phase one and a phase two, we've been buying easements for people in order to put a new west-side interceptor pipe, so that all of the sewer from the west side doesn't have to go down by the south end of the lake by the tulip, and then when we get heavy surges and rain and everything, we lift the manhole, covers, and sewage goes in the lake. It kind of defeats the whole purpose of all the hard work everybody's been doing in the community for the last, you know, twenty-plus years. So, that kind of happened and was, has been being worked on for years in parallel to us trying to figure out how to fund the lake and that sort of thing. So, in the future, much of the Westside Sewer will get rerouted. I think it's a, what, Chris, forty-eight-inch pipe?
Thirty-six.
Thirty-six inch pipe, essentially go to the Lowell. We have a GMOB Joint Management Oversight Board that we own fifty percent of the Lowell wastewater treatment with Lowell. So, that's where all of the sewage today flows, so.
And that's on one hundred and fifty-nine, and it's also, what Neil told us, it's all gravity fed.
Right, which is huge, because in this town, we have multiple lift stations. They cost money when the velocity control units and spindle drives go off, big bucks, and it always happens at the worst time, right, Tim? So.
And we've got more lift stations in Cedar Lake than Gary due to the fact that we were formed by the Glashers, just like Lake Michigan and Cedar Lake.
Good point. Thank you. I'm done with this, Chris.
Okay. Thank you, John. Thank you, Bob. Do we have approval and acceptance for the Kriegel easement? Motion?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Ralph?
To approve?
To approve, yes. Second by Colleen. Discussion?
What's the amount of money?
Thirty-two thousand, five hundred dollars.
Thirty-two five. Thank you. Roll call, Margot.
Robert Carnian.
Yes.
Julie Rivera.
Yes.
Ralph Miller.
Yes.
Colin Sheehan.
Yes.
John Foreman.
Yes.
Richard Chark.
Yes. Motion carries six zero.
So, this is our last parcel, so this is a great thing for our town.
Yes.
So, this is going to be huge. Thank you for all your hard work, Mr. Ross.
Yeah. The engineers are working on the phase three component now in design.
Great. Great. Now, we can start that. Super. Item seven. This is the amended item at the beginning of the meeting. Appointment to the planning commission. Do we have any nomination for appointment?
I'd like to nominate James Hunley to the planning commission.
Nomination from Bob for James Hunley. Any other nominations? Seeing none, do we have a second for Mr. Hunley?
I'll second.
Second by Colleen. Discussion?
Yeah. Jim Hunley, ex-police chief years ago. Julie, was he on the planning commission when you were on the planning commission, or? I know he applies every year.
I believe so. He was on the BZ, yeah.
Okay.
He was on the town council.
He was on town council. Was he what's the buzz of that?
Yeah.
He was trustee, so, yeah, county or township trustee. So, yeah, he's done a lot of things in our community, so.
Jim, you in the room?
No, I'm just.
Okay, we've had a nomination for Mr. Hunley, and there is a second by Ralph.
No, Colleen.
Colleen. I get your names. Very good. Roll call.
Robert Carnian.
Yes.
Julie Rivera.
Yes.
Ralph Miller.
Yes.
Colin Sheehan.
Yes.
John Foreman.
Yes.
Richard Chark.
Yes. Motion carries six zero. Congratulations, Mr. Hunley. Moving to reports, town council report, Mr. Carnian.
Let me get, I gotta pull something up here.
Okay. New fangled things, Bob.
You go ahead and ask the mothers. Anyone else have? Anyone else have? Yeah, as you all know, the pipes have been getting welded together for the Lake Trench project. It's huge, hope to kick it off in the month of April. There's a lot of myths out there, I got a call tonight with Shane at the Lighthouse, hey, it's going to smell like fish and it's going to be nasty. People aren't going to be able to use the lake and this and another. Ladies and gentlemen, we are going to have six thousand feet of pipe. The pipe will go on the south end of the lake to the west. It will then go around the large curve where we've cut many, many trees. And then it will head due south into almost the town of Preston where they board underneath the railroad tracks. And it will then come out by the de-watering facility, which is south on Parish. That land is owned by the town, we have one hundred and fourteen acres. Our de-watering facility is taking up potentially, what, forty, fifty, fifty acres? And it's going to be like a slurring, it'll be pumped from the barges. And when it goes there, it'll just kind of flow out into that basin, if you will. And then the runoff as it flattens itself will run off into the swamp and then eventually go back to Cedar Lake. It won't affect the lake levels according to the geologists we've been working with, so we don't have to worry about that. For boaters that have questions, apparently they have a pinning mechanism and they'll put flags and they'll be different crossing points. So I just wanted to inform everyone, because we have so many people here, about that because I just received a call tonight from the manager of the Lighthouse, all concerned on rumors these days. So that's the skinny. And in future weeks, if anyone has any questions, shoot us emails. Myself, Julie, and Ralph have been on the Eco Restoration, Bob's also been on it, but all of us are aware and understand. And hoping to see some dirt move from the bottom of the lake, so that's all I have.
Also, I want to mention on April fourteenth is the groundbreaking for the new public safety facility. It will not take up all of the town grounds. We chose that location, we already own the property. It'll take up about ten percent of the town grounds. There will still be able to have summer fest, farmers market, concerts, and anything in the future. It's an area used mainly for parking for certain events, so we'll lose some parking, but we'll make up for it in other ways. It's a much-needed facility, as both chiefs can tell you. Definitely need fire protection on the east side of the lake. And it was the most fiscally responsible land that we could have. We already own it, we didn't have to go purchase land, and it just made sense. And again, it is not going to be a huge facility that's going to take away so much of the public access that we enjoy here right now.
Thank you, Julie.
So April fourteenth, do you know the time five p.m.?
Five o'clock, yeah. Bob, are you?
Okay, I found this on Facebook, and I couldn't believe it. Cedar Lake song. We're down in Indiana at Cedar Lake, yahoo. We're feasting on manna. To the promised land we go. We raise a loud hosanna. And a happy hour you all know at Cedar Lake in Indiana.
Hey, Bob, okay. You're a hell of a singer.
Who wrote it, who wrote it, Bob, is it saying?
Uh, John Duff.
John Duff, okay, okay.
I found that interesting, I didn't know we had a song. Everybody at Levee might say.
Thank you, Bob. Any other town council reports? Town attorney, David, do you want to follow that, please?
No, I don't.
Oh, okay.
I cannot.
Chris, Marlon, do you have anything for them?
How's the mic?
Town manager, Chris?
I've got one. We received notice that one of our two public art grants that we submitted to the state was funded. So the sun dial by the beach will be the structure object piece of art that received funding by the state.
What's the other one?
The other one was not funded, the other was a sale book.
Mr. Chairman, since there's a lot of people here, since we think a lot of it has to do with trees that were cut down on the south end of the town, Chris, could you kind of walk through how our subdivision control ordinance is set up? How you guys vet things on that side of the wall and go through your explanation, please?
Those are the people who are thinking that that was going to be on the agenda.
Yeah, we're sorry to disappoint. Unfortunately, projects do not originate at the town council. According to our rules and regulations, all concept plans, potential projects facilitated and starts on the other side of the wall, as you said, between staff, they're vetted, look for their appropriateness. That's in accordance to our plan commission rules and regulations as well as our BZA. All applicants are to come before staff, again, for the appropriateness of the project to make sure that the applications are being filed accurately, that town ordinances, rules, regulations are being followed, comprehensive plan, zoning, all of that. All of those are protected under Indiana law disclosure five dash fourteen dash three dash four. And then when they are ready for public presentation, the applications are formally submitted. They are either, they go to either one of two boards, one of them being the BZA where variances or variances of uses are sought. And the BZA being a quasi-judicial board has purview over developmental variances. Those variances of use that are gone in front of the BZA have a recommendation from the BZA that are then given to the town council, and then the town council votes on those variances of uses. For the plan commission, that's rezoning, subdivisions, things of that nature. Those, again, go in front of the plan commission. Most of them start with a concept plan first in front of the plan commission, usually in a work, always in a work session. Again, after they've been vetted by staff, and then they're vetted in the concept level at the plan commission. They go through comments by the plan commission members, as has been tradition here in Cedar Lake and in all other municipalities. Then when they're ready to make their way out of concept plan and they're either ready for their rezoning and/or primary flat and/or site plan and/or development plan, they again come before the plan commission in a work session where they are again going through the vetting process by the plan commission, by staff, by town engineers, by other town consultants, by our town attorney for appropriateness and adherence to our ordinances and development standards. And then when they go through the work session and they're ready to go in front of the plan commission for the official plan commission meeting, which is the third Thursday of every month, that is when they can receive or be voted on by the plan commission.
Or Wednesday.
Or Wednesday.
Wednesday, yeah.
We attend a lot of meetings here. Those items that are in front of the plan commission for the official vote, either rezoned, that then goes to the town council. Things such as primary flats, final flats, development plans, et cetera, stay within the plan commission. So that is, and Dave, being the attorney in the room, can correct me if I've skewed anywhere because I think I gave the reader's digest of the entire, of the process. But that is the developmental process. That is the case for every person, entity, looking to develop property within the corporate boundaries of Cedar Lake. There are no special rules for anybody. That's processed for the big guys and for the little guys.
Thank you. And the reason I wanted to explain that is years ago, probably three, the YMCA was going to buy the golf course from the Hayes family. And they did come to the plan commission, they did show us concepts. And it wasn't any kind of detailed plan and things like that. And unfortunately, they didn't buy it, right? I think they ended up at the center of value. But it was, I was a big fan of possibly having that there. So unfortunately, they purchased it. Another gentleman purchased it, but, and the trees all got cut down, which makes everybody automatically say, oh, boy, something's happening. So thank you for explaining that, I appreciate it very much. I think that will help with, I would assume some people wanting to have some public comments, so thank you for letting me have the.
Thank you, John, thank you, Chris. Public comments, there'll be public comments.
Dave, did you agree with this reader's digest version?
Everything Chris just said is accurate, is verifiable, and the town zoning ordinance fourteen oh two. I'm sorry. Everything is verifiable in town zoning ordinance fourteen oh two, subdivision control ordinance four ninety-eight, the rules and regulations for each of the plan commission, BZA, and other state law. So it's all verifiable, it's here on file, actually, for anyone who is interested in it.
Thank you, Dave. Mr. Kubiak, are direct probe operations?
We finally got lift station eight finished, done, everything's working, two pumps are in, bypass, stuff is off, electric is upgraded. We're moving on to the next one by round the lake as we speak. So it took a long time to get everything in and operating and functioning, but we finally did it, so. Also, we're just about ready for the Parish water tower property is actually upgraded, so power is done. One well is up and finished, completely done. Due to the weather today and tomorrow, we had them coming to replace the second well, but we postponed it till Monday. But that will be all completely done and upgraded and fixed and.
How deep is that well? Those wells?
They're like three hundred and sixty feet. Both of the pumps are upgraded, the electric's upgraded, the whole, you know, everything is all, pipes upsized and tanks re-lined and everything. The tower's painted and cleaned and all good, so it's a pretty big accomplishment, really, so that's good to see.
That lift station on Fairbanks, what's the number?
Fairbanks, I think it's seventeen. Either seventeen or nineteen, I'm not a hundred percent sure, it's a lot, I'm pretty certain it's seventeen. The water line up here is hopefully, I mean, the guys are saying that by the end of the week that will be, there'll be a cross there. We're hoping for not a downpour tonight and rain all day tomorrow, that's going to postpone that another day. But they have one more day before they're across the road and over there into one hundred and fortieth, which will then allow the more traffic to open up at least through, you know, to the Lowell project. The Lowell one, I know they've had a lot of issues with other underground utilities and the depth of that thing and the proximity to the road. And it seems like every time that you fix one thing and take the next two pumps, it's something else. And it's been really prolonging the road closure part. And it's so deep right next to the road that it's, you know, it's just one of those.
How deep?
They're like eighteen, nineteen feet deep right now.
Especially this type of year with the clay like the lifts, you got to be careful.
Where it's twenty-six, I think, twenty-sixty feet, so it's deep.
It's deep.
But that's the beauty of it, when it's in, it's all gravity, there's no, I mean, it's a long, long way in line that's going to flow one hundred percent naturally. So it's a good thing once it's in. It's a good project to get it massive project. That's all I have for now, thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Police department, you had a tough time yet?
I think I've asked for it enough tonight, four weeks or the next.
Thank you, Chief. Chief Wilkenny?
I'm good tonight, too, as well.
Okay, very good.
Lot of things going on.
Thank you, Chief.
Don't give him that.
Any written communication? Chris?
We did receive one, I'll read it until we can take it under consideration. Dear town council members, we are writing a request for the use of the Monastery with Clubhouse for an addiction support group, Inner Recovery. Inner Recovery is an online support group founded by us, Brian Sabo, Anthony, David Sabo, sorry. I'm going to butcher a lot of last names. Anthony Herman and Megan Casey, together spent almost twenty years of recovery time as well. Meg is a CAPRC one, a certified addiction peer recovery coach. In complete transparency, they were affiliated with Turnover Joe's Hope as the research board members. With the consistent lack of progression, minimal communication, refusal to allow to engage in any area to help progress in the group and the authority of the founder felt his best to part ways. Due to the injustice to the community, we are requesting space and time that is already allotted to the aforementioned group, Inner Recovery. On February second, twenty twenty-three, we created an online platform for Inner Recovery. As late, there are over three thousand followers and growing. We believe by sharing our experience and knowledge, we can help support people in the recovery that lead to happier, healthier lives. Inner Recovery will be an all-recovery meeting to be held once a month, in person and virtually. The three of us meet twice a month to discuss possible events or long-range plans. Some of these include community benefit walks, supporting addiction, veterans' suicide prevention, et cetera. A float for recovery event, sober family camping weekend, holiday drives, youth prevention, sober group activities, as well as many others. Our online community is engaged daily, and we believe these events and the opportunity to possibly collaborate with the Parks Department will greatly benefit the community. The community is growing and the addiction numbers are rising. This not only affects addicts, but the families as well. Statistics show that over twenty-five percent of people seeking travel outside of Lake County. We would like to continue our efforts by bringing a safe place locally for those in the community who feel they have nowhere to turn and no one to talk to. Thank you for your time and opportunity, we look forward to hearing from you. We do need to review the Monastery with Clubhouse calendar. It does book out extremely quickly and is booked several months in advance right now. So I will work with hope to see what options are available and provide updates at future council meetings.
Can maybe put out what night they think they want?
Yeah.
Second, third, and how many hours is it, one hour, two hours? So Parks has all the answers they need.
Correct. Will do.
Thank you, Chris.
That's all for written communication.
That's all written communication. Next we go to public comment. Do we have any public comment?
Hi, Tracy Hassel, one three four three six Osborne Street.
Hi, Tracy.
I just have a very simple question to you, right? Since Jim Hunley is moving from unsafe building to plan commission, are you going to look at applications that have been already turned in? Like, I know three people who filled out in November, or do people need to submit new applications?
We're going to try and get somebody from the people that have turned something in.
Do you still have those applications?
Yes, we still have.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, Tracy. Thanks, Tracy.
Ryan Brown, one four seven oh one Moore Street. Has variance been filed for zoning for these new subdivisions?
Mostly.
Okay.
Correct, Chris?
That's correct. I would say that this town does not agree with any rezones. It's growing very fast and our infrastructure is fragile. Small setbacks in traffic, the grocery stores, everything cannot handle it. So I'll let the rest of the town speak for you, bud. Everyone that I've talked to, no one agrees with rezoning.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, good evening, my name's Brian DeBree, I live at one three seven oh one Lowerman Street. My questions slash comments are related to the Eco Restoration project. I attended a fundraiser a year and a half ago at the Lighthouse, missed most of the presentation due to another commitment. But I did speak to the engineers directly when I had the opportunity, and I had asked them about lake levels. I'm a lakefront resident and I'm also a business owner with a lakefront-focused business. The engineer had stated to me that the lake levels would be insignificant, that they would change insignificantly during the process. And I asked, what does insignificant mean to you? And he said, four to six inches. And I said, that is significant. My question, you know, as it's going to not only affect my business, but many of my customers and not many, many business owners around the community as well. Is there a report or a monthly update related to a few things on the project? I'd like to understand the schedule. There's a lot of back and forth on where the project's going to start, when it's going to start, how many years it's going to go. I'd like to see, if possible, maybe on the town's website or somewhere. Because it's such a focused project and a lot of money, taxpayers' money going into this, we need to have visibility to the project.
Agreed.
So I'd like to understand if we can get a schedule, a minimum on a monthly basis. And also, I'd like to understand if there are contingency plans in place. If we're in a drought year like we have been in the last three years. We were eighteen inches low, sixteen to eighteen inches low three years ago. Twelve inches two years ago and up to fourteen inches last year. If you're going to add another four to six inches to that water level or decrease it, there's going to be a lot of folks that aren't going to be able to not only use the lake, but get their equipment out of the lake. And then, of course, the damage. And then the damage that's going to come when you can't get all those boats. If you remember the Lake Shaffer incident a couple of years ago, those boats were winterized in place. So I just, again, like some more visibility on the project through a report and a schedule.
In fact, in fact, next Friday, we're trying to get the committee together with one of the geologists from Burke, as well as Donald Font, Doug Spencer, Dan Pager, Bob Gross are the part of that committee, as well as Julie, Ralph, and myself. So we're trying to do something like that next week and we'll certainly be sure to get it posted on the website.
They keep the schedule live. Contingency plans, I think, need to be addressed because during the forty years that I've had visibility to the project, there needs to be contingency plan. I understand the project's going to move forward, but what-if scenarios need to be addressed.
No, you need to tell them, absolutely.
Currently on our website, I know that there was, there was the schedule. Chris, do you know if that's been updated or does that schedule?
That is not, we have a reconstruction meeting coming up soon with the dredger. And once we have a updated timeline from them, we will post it on that same, that website for those.
Thank you. Thank you, Brian. Thanks, Brian.
Pamela Devonport, one three oh three five Schubert Street. So my concern right now is Meyer Manor Terrace and Meyer Manor. Every time it pours down rain, I have pictures, it takes my neighbors several days to get the stone out. I'm losing property every time it rains. I've lost river rock twice at the edge of my driveway. My other concern is that park. I've utilized Pottawattamie Park for thirty years. Grandkids, kids sweating, fishing, we losing that?
No. There's no plans to do anything?
There's no plans for anything with that because I know that's why I'm asking because Meyer Manor Terrace and Meyer Manor are the oldest subdivisions in this town.
So here's what, here's the, that whole area, there's been talk, but again, it's never come before the plan commission, but there's been talk of trying to do something there as a private-public partnership. But we've never given any definitive plans or anything like that.
Okay, because I know it's wet there also during the winter.
But one thing that will be certain is any lakefront property that the residents own will remain so that the residents have lake access. For example, the Marshall's Place and the Walbert Park that we were fortunate enough to purchase using tip funds about eight years ago is now a great public park where people from within the community can stop. And soon there's going to be a little suite set there, I believe, Tim, and some restrooms. So we want to make accessible to the people here as much as possible, so.
I got one more issue.
You bet.
Because my neighbor's already had to have her well looked at. We have wells. All this building up going on is draining our wells. We shouldn't have to pay to have our wells fixed.
Pam, I don't disagree that many wells have dried up. Mine as well, a few years ago, we have been in a drought. Brian brings up great points. I really feel like with the lack of snow this year, many more of us with hundred-foot wells. But the water engineers that we work with are at the three hundred and fifty-foot aquifers, and there's multiple aquifers, and they're not related. As common sense says, if water's up here, well, how can it not dribble down, right? But this is what the professionals are telling us.
Okay, my last thing, with all the building going up, are we still going to come look at roads that really need to be taken care of?
Yes.
My road keeps getting patched, like I said. I've probably lost about this much property all the way around.
Yes.
And the more it rains, the more property I lose.
And we have to redo that properly. Dig down, put limestone, put storm drains, just like we just recently did with Vermillion Street. We tried to patch that years ago, we didn't have a place for the water to go, so it did exactly what is happening to your road. I know.
Right, because when I first moved in that house twenty years ago, the first big rain we got, my yard flooded and I freaked out. But we have the drainage. Well, my yard doesn't flood anymore. Everything just washes down into Hundy's parking lot.
Well, we did half of the subdivision with proper storm and curbs, probably 2008, 2000...
That's across. That's across. My subdivision doesn't have...
Yours does not.
No, it does not.
That's correct. So hit on aliens.
Yes.
I assure you, the town is a new old town, right? So all these old subdivisions, and we kind of, we hit South Shore as well as up on the top of the hill by MacArthur six years ago, and bonded for those two and did them properly. Dug down, put storm drains, put curbs, gave the water a place to go, and, but we have many more to go. This community has still many, many bad roads.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, folks.
Good evening.
Site number 14823 Moore Street, Cedar Lake. Last couple of meetings I came in and I've asked, we know that the town is being, is negotiating with Mr. Lawton on South Shore and UPUD and voting for South Shore. And the last meeting, one councilman admitted that they had seen the concept plan. The rest of you asked if you could see it, because you claimed you hadn't seen it.
Never saw it.
Never saw it.
Never saw it.
When you asked to see it, you didn't see it?
I never asked to see it.
You asked to see it blind.
Why not? Why not? Because it's in flux.
John, I can't decide if it's dishonesty or incompetence.
Greg, I've never seen the plan. If I saw the plan, I'd tell everyone.
You asked to see the plan two weeks ago, John. You haven't had time to look at the plan in two weeks?
It's in flux. I don't know what plan it is. I don't wanna see it, so I'm on the Plan Commission. When it comes to the Plan Commission, I'll...
John, you asked in a public meeting.
Yeah, but I haven't looked at it.
Chris, can we...
I have not looked at the plan, Greg.
You asked, "Can we see the plan?"
Greg, I...
Did you ask in the public meeting that we could, "Could we see the plan, Chris?" Did you?
I said, "Chris, can I see the plan?" Since then to now?
So you've had two weeks to see the plan?
I don't want to see the plan. I don't wanna see the plan until it's something real. It's just like the way I'm seeing it. Think about that.
John, I can't...
I did not see the plan. I still haven't asked a week to see the plan.
I can't, because you're gonna sit there, all of you, and insult our intelligence.
Greg, I did not go...
Now, let me ask you this. Are you negotiating with John Lawton to buy the monastery and donate it to the town for a park?
Hell, no, I'm not negotiating with John Lawton.
Not at all.
Not at all. Where did you hear that one, though? This is ridiculous.
John, I heard it from a pretty reliable source, and I've never known you to take an interest in parks before?
Never, never.
But I could see you taking an interest in that one.
No, sir. Greg, I don't know where you're getting these accusations from, like I told you two weeks ago.
John, that's why I'm here asking you.
Yes.
Are you negotiating for a park at Monastery?
Absolutely negative. I have no idea.
I'm accusing you. I'm asking you to understand...
Thank you. I've never even heard that until now. Chris, do you know anything?
The only discussion on purchasing of the monastery prior came from Park Board members.
So that hasn't been brought up, just to convince us that you're out.
Greg, I don't know anything about it. I'm not on the Park Board. And Greg, I am not involved in any of that. I mean, you could believe...
I'm not using forces, John.
Hey, it's not my fault the monastery bought to my property. It's not my fault.
How about...
One of the times, Greg. So, yeah, that's... How long ago was that now?
I'm not positive. I know there was a letter sent by a Park Board member to the realtor of that property asking if it was for sale and what was the price, and that is where the discussion stops because park impact, these are currently dedicated to other projects.
Chris, did, John ask you to see the concept plan at the last meeting? It's on video.
On the record, yes.
But did I see the concept plan, Greg?
And you didn't, you didn't have a chance to look at the concept plan last two weeks, John?
I didn't look at it. I don't even care about it. It's rumors until it comes to the Plan Commission. I've always looked my, this is a part-time gig that we do here. I have a full-time job, Greg. I did not...
I appreciate, I appreciate your intent to dismiss our concerns. I understand. I understand. I get it.
No, you're wrong. I don't like...
I don't know if I'm wrong. We got an election season running, and your guys' sides are all over every developer's property in town, so you gotta know something.
We don't. We don't.
All right.
Thank you.
I consider myself dismayed.
I would just like to let everybody know that. There was a subdivision next to the Hannover High School called Lenar. It was in a farm field, okay? I can tell you, on the Plan Commission and on the Town Council, I voted no. Why did I vote no? It had, it was not because it was a PUD, but it had multifamily that I wasn't in love with, it had some RT that I wasn't in love with, and go back 2000, end of 2019, 2020, I vote the way I believe. I don't care what other people think. I don't care what other people do. It's none of my business. I'm not up here for the money. I can tell you that. I'm up here to help our community, and I always try to think 25 years out there.
We were hoping you were here to represent us, John.
Just that is the... We are your business. Right.
And all of my, all the residents of our community, naturally. But just three years ago, I voted no on a similar type of situation that people think is coming to South Shore. I've never seen the plan. I did ask Chris in the public meeting, and I did not see it since then, and I don't want to, and I'm not going to, because if this plan is changing, it's hearsay, it's rumors, and that's the way it is. That's my opinion, and that's how I operate.
Sir?
Hello, sir. Thank you. I'm sorry, Frank, 7326 West 143rd Avenue. I have a couple of issues. Number one is, for Chris, the dredging is gonna kick in around April, correct, Brooklyn?
Correct.
I own a boat. I'm on the south end of the lake. It's imperative that wherever they put the pipes, they automatically put the flag in right there, so I don't, you know, so we don't tear up our lower units. That's number one imperative. My other question has to do with the water tables and per tet. I know the one well is flowing out off of Fairbanks. Where is the other well being drilled, do you know?
Well?
The well from the new water supply.
The wells are, they are drilled already, and they're right here just three blocks to the south on that lighthouse where that gray garage is right there.
All right. That well will affect my water.
There's two wells there.
Right. That will affect my water, and that water is gonna be utilized for the new development.
Um, which new development?
The South Shore.
South Shore.
The golf course.
I would say, I have no idea. There's no, there's no plans for anything, but it will be, that water will be utilized for the east side water system currently, which is the Lakeside, Crystal Oaks, that area, so the water, it's not...
I, hence my question is this.
For there.
We're gonna put up roughly 1,300 holes.
I'm not sure where that number came from.
Depending on the zone. Correct. Here we go.
We've never heard that one.
We're gonna use a lot of water. That water's gonna come from somewhere. What contingencies are being put in place for all the people who have wells?
They do.
In the event the water tables drop to such a point that we can't, we have no water? Is that being looked at, and are there subsequent contingencies? That's, that's what I think a lot of people are worried about.
And I think that's being looked at all the time by our utility engineers, these engineers. And we can get Neil here sometime and talk to you about that.
Well, I think that's one of the...
He'd be happy to do it, sir.
Right, that's one of the issues. And the other issue...
Carol, we didn't, we didn't put in a new well. What we did is we bought the well from the lighthouse.
Well, I, I know that.
Yeah.
I know, I know that. But my point is, that well hasn't been utilized the way it's supposed to be utilized. And so that water will affect some of the residents in that corridor, and I happen to be in water. So contingencies have to be made in the event there, there is a shortage of water.
That's why we hired engineers, still.
I, I know that.
We're covering our...
I work with a lot of engineers, and some of are very good. My last one has to do with the, again, the zoning change in the lotsides. I'm not in favor of a zoning change. When I built my house, I had a 50-foot setback from the main road. I needed to reap the setback after it was built, so I had to come for a variance, and I had to pay a fine. Now, the setbacks are a lot less, the sign limitations are a lot less. I'm not in favor of it. All right?
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hello.
Yes.
I'm Meg Haley. I live at 14819 Moore Street. Obviously, I'm right across the street from the South Shore. I just have a couple of questions. First off, I want to thank everybody that came out today. I posted on Facebook. I don't know how I interacted with the crowd tonight, but I... My concern is, obviously, how it's gonna be zoned. It's zoned to R1 now, that development, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
I really don't know.
It was sold as R1. You don't know what it is?
I really... We have a zoning map right there. It could be agriculture. All you know is it's R1. Is it all R1?
Ashley printed these for me.
Good job.
So it's currently, it's sold...
R1. R1.
Um, how many, can you tell me how many pud subdivisions or developments are in Cedar Lake right now?
Probably Centennial, Oak Brook, Rose Garden, Beacon Point, so probably five, six. And I'll say that, all of those except the Beacon Point, East, West, and the Oak Brook were pre-2008. And the one on 41 is, but that's all single-family. There's no duplexes, or there's no...
And then, what about the two, the one, this is by Lake Dale, the new one, and then the one here, is that Lakeside too?
By Lake Dale.
Lake Dale, the, the north end of Lake Dale.
They are on the side. You can come and look at my maps here.
Again, we don't know anything about that 2006 or '07, way before I was involved here. That was all annexed, that was all annexed into the town of Cedar Lake as a PUD, but they have not come back to the Plan Commission and told us anything about what they may or may not be doing, but they do annex some additional 20 acres.
Those two subdivisions have F patients in yet for zoning?
Not that I'm aware of.
No. None, Chris.
So there's three subdivisions that we don't know what they're gonna end up being?
That's true, but this one across the street years ago, I'm gonna say 80s or 90s, was given some different zoning. It's not R1. It's RT, RM, and I think B1 along Morris, and that was given. So the danger, danger here is when you give people different zoning, they can book out of town for 20 years, like what happened across from Hannover, and then come back to the town and do what they want. When you give RM and RT, it can get ugly real fast, and it can be compact, so...
So is this Town Council going to want three subdivisions that are pud?
It depends. It depends on what they bring us.
Well, no. What are you in favor of?
I personally...
What are your opinions?
I personally think that for me to try to speculate on something that may or may not happen in the next year, 10 years...
I don't, I don't, I don't want, I'm not asking you to speculate. I'm just wanting your opinion. Or are you going to listen to any of the residents in this room that are opposed to pud?
You bet. So planned unit development is what...
Right. I know what you're saying.
So let's say that some developer has property that's already zoned for multifamily and for dense development, like RM or RT, okay?
20 years.
And let's say they wanna build 1,000 apartments. In that situation, if he or she had a different piece of property, I would sit down at the table with him, kinda like what we do with Shillings. Let me explain. The Union Station train was going to happen once upon a time in Cedar Lake, right off 141st and Pershavin. And so what ended up happening was all that got rezoned. So then Shillings ended up purchasing the property. So what they did is they said, "Hey, look, we wanna buy the west side of Pershavin, and we wanna sprinkle some duplexes along the railroad tracks, and we wanna buy what is now gonna be called Oak Brook off 129th and 41, and we wanna sprinkle some duplexes." And they also already owned Union Station on the east side of tracks, which was able to be multiple, multiple, multiple apartments, okay, to service that train. That was once upon a time gonna happen. Because of that, they negotiated with us at the Plan Commission, all three of their subdivisions, and somewhat, we negotiated with them in public meetings to try to downsize the density of what Union Station could have been, and gave them some duplexes along the railroad tracks over there by that garbage dump off the industrial park, and try to hide some of that, because sometimes people that live in the duplexes, they're nice duplexes, they're in the duplexes, they're snowbirds, and they don't have kids, and so on and so forth. So we tried, we did work with them. It was all above board, just like anything in the future. So I encourage everybody, come to Plan Commission meetings, please. Work sessions and meetings.
Well, can I have anybody's opinion on what they, what, what's your opinion of what you would like for these three subdivisions that are within two miles?
So here's, here's, not an opinion, just commentary. So a lot of this zoning happened long before any of us were on the Town Council.
I, I don't care. What I'm gonna be for, what...
This is important.
I'm looking for four.
Yeah. If I were to sit here and say, "We're going to follow every one of these zoning to the T," we would have probably two areas that will be high-rise apartments, 'cause we're gonna say, "Well, this is what it's zoned for." So we would let the developer do that if we did everything to a T. But as John was saying, if we negotiated with developers, like we, you know, like, and I don't care if there's apartments, I'm not against it, but if we were to say, you know, the town, the community does not want apartments, we don't know, you know, how it's, are these gonna be cheaper, are they gonna bring in our home value, but people who bought this land that was zoned 20 years ago for apartments, they could...
I guarantee you, it's not like 20 years ago that anything was zoned for a park.
Right. I'm not the park, I'm the front part of the apartment. I just want your assurance that you're gonna listen to us and take in what we, what we want, what we, you know, don't want.
What's best for you, that's what we're gonna, yeah, absolutely.
We definitely are, we just need to change some of those plans.
Well, I mean, you guys can go in whatever you want. We can't...
But you said the name is Meg, right? Hey, Bob, what is the, what we used to call the Bronx Park, what is it zoned? Do you know?
Oh, it's, it's zoned everything. There's a portion of it that's R1, and then it's B2, R1, what is that? What is she up there?
RM and RT.
RM and RT.
And Bob, you've been a councilman 26 years. How, when did you guys vote that in, or was it before you?
No, it was when I was here. And that's, these two, these two plots here are set. They can build according to the zoning. But the one at South Shore, Ms. Recupero and I said, we're not going to let that change from R1.
It makes us interested in that because that's three subdivisions within two-mile radius, and that's a lot of people.
Okay.
And it's going to affect our roads, our sewers, our wells, everything. And I'm not for growth. I'm all for growth. And I know we can't stop the developments from happening, but let's be smart about it, and let's not make it a PUD.
We have it smart. We will continue. Thank you.
Gordon Dixon, 8711 West 132nd Place. I'm here tonight on behalf of Cedar Lake Summer Fest. We still have no resolution for how we're going to be able to pull off this festival. I did meet with Chris and a couple of guys from, from our festival came with. We had someone there from the construction company. And we were basically told in no uncertain terms that they weren't moving the fence and that the road would be destroyed as soon as they started working, and that there was nothing they could do about it. So that plan is nil. And we were trying to come up with some kind of ways to, come up with another plan for being able to get parking in there. And of course, a lot of things I had already talked about at the last meeting that aren't possible were brought up. And we were told basically to figure it out. We were told to put a pink ribbon on the fence somewhere, and they'd tear it out for us. And...
What do you mean?
Well, we got a way to get cars in and out.
So what do you mean by...
So we're going to remove the fence or remove the fence?
Remove some of the fence, yes. That's what we were told.
Got to do it something anyway, huh?
So...
So you don't want that?
On Morris Street?
Well, first of all, we can't do this on Morris Street because it's...
Yacht Club Road, I think, Mary Joan.
Right. Well, can I?
Yes, please, please.
We were told that we needed to come up with some ideas, and we have three ideas. And it has to be one of these three. There's no other way we can do this. And it's problematic no matter how you look at it. And we need some kind of resolution, somebody to make. We need a decision made tonight on which of these three things we are possibly going to do. One, which I already know is not a possibility, is that they don't start construction until after all the events at the town grounds are done. I'm pretty sure that that's not a possibility. But that was, we were asked to come up with some ideas, and that was one of them. Two, the original idea that we asked for is that the fence be moved and the road not be destroyed. Actually, be told to the construction company that they have no choice, and they have to allow that to be that way. Which is actually the simplest, most easiest way that we can make this all happen and not cause a whole lot of trouble.
Who is destroying road, man?
If they told, they said that they were going to come in there, the road would be destroyed. It would look like a moonscape. That was the...
What road? Morris?
No, the little road that's in...
Oh, Boardwalk?
That, yeah, that goes up into the field. We need that for parking. We need to be able to get cars up into that parking area.
I don't understand why that would be destroyed because we're going to take the fence out on the corner.
Well, we were told there was no...
That was going to be destroyed because it's going to be excavated out as part of the drive, access drive for the fire department.
But does that have to happen before the close of July? I don't think so. They're going to move dirt up on the corner if they cut the ribbon. Why wouldn't they, why would we let them do anything like that until after the end of the summer? So they, they will do all the cutting in of everything?
Yeah.
Starting in the next 30 days? Interesting. Okay, I'm, I just want to be clear. I understood what...
Okay. So we came up with one other way that we could possibly make this happen, and there's a lot to this. First of all, we're going to have to have parking in two spaces. In the field where we normally have it, which would be accessed from the Yacht Club Road. The second area of parking would be where we normally have it now in the paved parking area and in front of the town grounds, because we have to have ADA parking. There's no way around it. Problem is, the Yacht Club Road is way too narrow. The only way that we can use the Yacht, the Yacht Club Road is if it is widened by a minimum of three feet. And we have been out there and measured. And I drove down that road before I came to this meeting to verify. It is just far too narrow. It needs a minimum of three feet, and even then, it's not the best of ideas. It's going to require a whole lot more people in order to pull this off this way. Because we're going to have to have people collecting money where they normally collect money, and we're going to have to have people collecting money at this new location. Which means that the groups that come and collect the money for us are going to have to double the amount of people that they have. We're going to have to, as a committee, have more people because now we have another area that we have to be able to collect money from the people who are doing the parking. We have to be able to provide them with change and several other issues there. One other thing is that where that area is on Yacht Club is going to have to have a light put up in there because people have to be able to see to get in and out. We're going to need more police officers because we're going to need security down there at all times so that somebody doesn't get robbed while they're collecting money.
Can you charge more? Seriously? To help offset somebody's costs?
Well, you're, you're making the, you're making the...
I mean, you're only charging $5 to park. Okay, $10 to park. Okay.
You're, wait, 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 wait. See, you're sitting right now thinking that the Summer Fest is going to pay for all of this. We don't have the money to pay for all of this.
I respect that.
Okay? So another problem is that the people that are going to be coming down Constitution Avenue to park and that to park are going to be ADA motorcycles. We're going to have to have vendors come down there to drop off. Our van people have to come through there. Lighthouse still has to be able to get their people down there. And I don't know if Jerry Smith is going to be doing parking in there or not this year. But somebody's going to have to sit up at the end of Constitution and check every car that comes through there. Otherwise, the general public is going to go down there anyway. And then we're going to have a big mess down at the end of that road trying to get people turned back around and out of there. So we're going to need VIPs or police there. On fireworks night, you're also going to have to have the VIPs and police up at the Yacht Club Road there. Like I said, we're going to have to have some security at the other place where we're collecting money. We also have electrical issues. Do we know if there's any electric in the old pool house still?
Yes.
There is?
Yes.
Because we need two 110 amps on the poles on Morris Street to be able to keep up the things that we do in that, in that aspect. And I mean, there's other aspects and problems potentially with that plan. But these are the three things that we've been able to come up with. This is all we can come up with, and we need to know tonight, which of these three plans are we going to be able to do? And, and if so, how is all this going to get paid for on this third plan? Because we don't have the money for it. There's no way we can widen the road. There's no way we can pay for all kinds of extra security. None of these things.
Why can't you come in on the Yacht Club Road and out at the front gate over there?
Because they won't have a road area for the road being tore up. The road going up the hill, it's just that it's being tore up.
Besides that, as the police chief, I'm going to, I'm going to say there's going to be no exiting from that gate from the park because that will just cause a bad traffic.
That gate's too narrow anyways.
I would say, Gordon, to be in all honesty, you're not going to get a answer tonight. We can't just spend taxpayer money without a plan and know exactly how many dollars we're going to spend. Number one. Number two, those two gentlemen right there, chief and chief, have to be a part of this plan. Because that is imperative that we take care of public safety.
I would like very much that those two be included in this because so far, they haven't been.
Okay. So may I, Mr. Chairman, can I offer, ask Chris to please coordinate a meeting with Gordon ASAP with police and fire chief, and include, and move in with public works? And let's, you're a smart guy. These guys are smart guys. All the people on your staff that have been doing a good job for many, many years. Everybody puts their head together. I'm thinking we can come up with a solution. But we all need to be pulling the rope, saying, doggone it, direct.
This won't be tonight, Gordon, but we need to do it.
Well, you realize what the date is, right? We're well into April, and, you know, we only just got this map, what, two weeks ago?
Other than not getting any money, you already have approval to do everything. Other than us spending money for additional whatever you rattled off, it's important for us to know what that dollar amount is. But maybe the three of you guys get together, along with Chris and Loz, you guys could come up with a game plan that you don't need to have us put in more money, right? Who knows?
Well, I, that, that would have to be a completely different plan that I'm not aware of.
Number four, maybe.
Yeah, Plan Four. Very good. Thank you, Gordon.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Hi, I'm Chuck James III, 7609 West 132nd Place. Seeing all that's going on about these, all these developments, and considering putting even more houses in these developments, whether it's planned or it's on the other side of the wall or any of that right now. I grew up, I know Ralph and Mary Joan in the back from going to the boys' club almost every day when I was a kid growing up, okay? When I got too old to go to the boys' club, I started golfing at South Shore. I started playing softball at Lemon Lake. I'm seeing pictures online of people that posting pictures of the roller rink they had back in the day. My question is, if you're going to put all these houses in, what kind of community project are you going to put in? A community center. Right now, I'm a member at the YMCA in Crown Point. I go at 4:30 in the morning on the way there because at 4:45 I get there, I can actually get a workout with a little bit of continuity. Because if I go after, I get off of work, and I'm just working at the hospital in Crown Point right now, the new one on 65231. There is no way I can get a workout in without waiting for every single piece of equipment that I have to use because it's beyond overcrowded. We have no facilities here for anybody in the lake to use. We don't have a golf course anymore. We don't have softball anymore. We've got to drive to Crown Point to do that. People drive to Crown Point to go golf or play softball. You know what they're going to do? They're going to spend their money in Crown Point because they're already there. They're not going to drive back to our businesses and patronize them. What are we going to do so that people have something to do? Not to mention, all these houses. Hanover is already way bigger than it was when I was a kid. And I graduated from Crown Point, I was like 389, I graduated class in 1994. That school is massive now. It's on its way to probably touching up to Lake Central, which is one of the top, like, seven largest schools in the state of Indiana. They have one baseball team. They have one football team. They have one orchestra, one band. Those kids that were cramming into those two schools by putting all these different subdivisions in are not going to have anything to do with their own high school when they get there. So my opinion is, we go for quality over quantity, and then we invest in the, in the town. Crown Point has the Bulldogs better, great place. Corn roasts are still busy. Instead of shutting all those businesses down, they put in a place to do that. You can play hockey there. You can go skate there with your kid. There's plenty that we could do with this town to make it better, other than houses and people places.
Okay. And where we're standing could be just what you're describing in terms of, this can be a town center. We're hoping to make the Parish Avenue, the additional land that we have over where the D-Water facility is going to be, to be a nice recreational area, kind of like St. John's Parks and things like that.
Yeah, we need something, we need to invest in improving the facilities that we have, and we need to put in more facilities so that people have something to do other than drive home from work, sleep, wake up, maybe grab something to eat, and go back to work, and then find something to do the rest of the day.
That's why we...
We're becoming a sleep-and-eat town.
Yeah, I agree.
We put park boards together, and they are working to improve the parks. We are getting a different equipment. All kinds of stuff is coming before us every day. They have a budget. We have park impact fees. I mean, we're getting pavilions put in. We got basketball courts. We're putting in pickleball for the elderly and anybody else that likes it. We're having programs at the clubhouse. They're brand new. We're just getting off the ground. That's the direction we're going.
Okay, that being said, and we reached out to the Lake County Parks Department because Lemon Lake is atrocious compared to what it was when I was a kid. We had nice softball fields. There was different places for playgrounds you could use. Now it's, the tennis courts are no longer usable. The walking track is just one paved area. There's no boats to rent or any of that stuff. I mean, I grew up right down the street from Toomey's Park Resort. We could go down there, you could grab an ice cream, play some arcade games, go out and rent a boat, rent a paddle boat, rent anything. And then also, we have a lake, you know? In case anyone doesn't know, where are the, we should have a pier where people can fish off of. I mean, just going behind the Chamber of Commerce, you got all the boats going in and out. You're not going to catch any fish. It'd be nice, you know, we have the creek that comes down right down the street here. When I was a kid, we fished on that thing a good portion of the year. Now, I don't know if it's the lift station we put in there or not, but that water is never deep enough. There's never any fishing there anymore. I mean, that whole stretch right there could be utilized for the town to be able to take the kids fishing. We have the end of the street at 140th, well, I guess it's Benyon and 140th Place. There is an area there that has never been used for anything. I mean, make a park out of that. Put a little ledge up there so people could fish. And then maybe put some kind of a water rotating facility down, down there, downstream a little further to keep a little water in there, and just put a chute on it like they have in Hobart that lets the water out from the bottom up. Storm comes in, that thing opens up, the water flows like it normally does. But at least they can control the amount of water in Lake George by having that, I don't know what the term of it is. But they can control and make sure there's water kept in instead of letting everything just flow down the Lake Dale uncontrolled.
I wish we could do that. Honestly, it's a stable lake. We can't, we can't do that. We've tried to do that to keep our lake levels higher.
Wow.
It goes south. It's a challenge, yeah.
We can do it. You've just got to be able to go in there and do something about it.
You brought up a lot of this, Judge, 100%.
So you've got to make something out of it. You can't just build a bunch of houses called a community.
No.
Hi, my name's Angie. I live on Lee Court. And I'm new to Cedar Lake, but what I'm hearing is restoration for the lake, sewage problems, so we have to put in pipes, and all our money's being spent there. And I would just like the town to consider, what are we doing to preserve what we have in Cedar Lake? For example, the trees. Everybody's upset about the trees. The trees provide, they provide nutrients. They filter the water. Removing those roots disturbs the soil, which puts more sediment into the lake. And I am just asking if the town could please consider, as they're doing restoration, they're also doing preservation. I think a lot of the trees being removed for new development.
I'm talking about the trees all over Cedar Lake. You know, even if it's a mile away, the new subdivisions. What happens is we take away a lot of the trees, a lot of the native plants that are, that have long roots that hold up the soil. When they put in subdivisions, they're putting in landscape plants that are very shallow. They do not go into the ground, and a lot of invasive species. So as things are getting removed and not native things are being put in, we talk about restoration now. You don't know what you're going to have in 20 years. If the lake's probably going to be full of dirt.
Unfortunately, if it's private-owned property, say, the person that bought South Shore, of course, it's, we can't tell a private owner not to take their trees down. Like, we have no jurisdiction over telling them, who owns this property, you're not allowed to clear it.
Okay. What I believe is that because it is a small lake and the water is going lower, that it should be a number-one priority for Cedar Lake to make sure that if they're going to sell a huge amount of land like that with 150-year-old trees, that that works out.
But the town has to sell the land. The town has to sell the land.
We don't have the right.
The private property owners sold, you know, sold the land and a private property owner bought it. The town is...
I, I completely understand what you're saying. But you're asking, and the residents of Cedar Lake have to pay to restore because of the decisions that are being made and approved by whatever is getting developed.
Well, the lake needed this for a long time.
Yes.
A long, long time. I know you've just been here recently.
Sure.
This started 30 years ago.
Sure.
And finally come into completion for about $16 million less than we thought it was going to be 30 years ago.
Right, I understand. And I'm not trying to get into the details of everything. All I'm asking is that the town consider preserving the trees and the soil so we don't have this problem in another 30 years as well.
I love slow-growth trees, so I agree 100%.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Al Recupero, 10812 West 134th Place. Just got to say, I love energy in this place today. All right, so I'm surprised I'm the first to talk about this tonight, but I just recently received my property tax statement. And I'm surprised to see that my rate total went up 23% this year. Evidently caused by my increase in homes' assessed value, but more so the city tax rate, which jumped up 62.8% for me. So at this rate, in two more years, my property taxes will have more than doubled from what I paid in 2019. I know, since I've moved to town, I hear a lot of people justifying the density of building, school expansion, saying, well, it raises our, our property values. Well, those people fail to realize that if you plan to stay here for a lifetime, the only thing a higher assessed value means is you're going to pay more taxes. Okay? I don't know if that makes sense to everybody, but... If someone had moved here into a house that was built in the 1950s, I'm starting to feel that my family's being extorted, you know, to put the bill for larger government and bigger infrastructure that, you know, frankly, I don't feel like my household's creating the demand for it, nor do we ask for it. I can't understand the logic that, you know, all of a sudden, my home is worth a little bit more money. The town needs a little bit more to, you know, do their...
Mercy, that goes to town.
Worth a little bit of burden.
And we didn't, we didn't do the appraisal. That was, that's the county that did the appraisal.
Well, who's in charge of, well, I'll finish, but...
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Well, first, while you're on it, who's in charge of the percentage of my property taxes that go to the city? Who runs that?[1689.94]
Assessors assess the properties, they, I'll say the schools take 50%, the towns get 24%, 25%, and the rest goes to the county.
Uh, okay, I understand that. Well, big picture wise, when there's assessments going on, what is driving how much revenue, revenue, which I love when, when towns talk about bringing tax revenue, like it's a business, um, who's making that call, and what's driving it that, hey, the town needs more money?
It's the county, it's the county.
The town is on there too.
It's not the town.
I will, I'll get very well-
And you can approve, and you can appeal that.
Yeah, but if it's, you're not getting my point, it has to do with what's going on in the town. We'll get to that, but, we all know what's causing it, okay? I hear meeting after meeting, the council saying, "The developers own the land, they can, you know, they have the right to build on it." And I understand that. They have a right, you have to protect their right to build on it. We live in a capitalist society, I get that. But you guys also have the duty to protect the residents' rights, to make sure that we can afford to live in our houses that we purchased years ago, okay? So my question for the council is, what are you guys doing to make sure that these property taxes don't keep trending this way, or is this just the standard we're gonna have to expect from here on out?
So, first of all, the statement they had, 1% is what you pay. It's assessed valuation. The county, there's probably no doubt that the trending that they're doing is wrong. My house is 1949, okay? And it's ridiculous. I'm gonna go appeal my taxes at Lake County, and I hope everyone in this room does. Especially those people that don't have a brand-new $600,000 home, with brand-new faucets, and brand-new fixtures, and brand-new what-have-you, okay? And this is, has 100%, you said out, right?
Yeah.
100% out at the county level. Did they come to my house this year and assess my property? I doubt it. I have landlocked lots in the backyard that keep going up in assessed valuation, they're not even accessible. I got rid of the road that was once upon a time there, 'cause I wanted to replace it. So the point is, is this is a county problem. Are they trending because the new subdivisions are worth 600 Gs apiece, and they're taking advantage of us little guys? Yep, that's what happened.
Yeah, that's what I'm getting at, so I'm glad that-
It's at the county level.
So-
It's the county level, though.
You, they have so many days to go in.
45 days from-
Yeah, but I think, but all this infrastructure, we have people talking about, "Oh, we need new roads, we need that." But that all comes from that same fork, correct?
You have to know, Al, the developer puts in roads, and then when they complete 80% of it, they then can go take that performance bond and turn it down into a maintenance bond, okay? But, this town, because it was an old, old town in the county, and we weren't even incorporated until 67, and there was some legal stuff that happened from 67 to like 70, we inherited all these goat paths. Underneath the asphalt that we call asphalt is black dirt. So the only way to fix roads properly is like what we did recently out in front of Utopia Subdivision, just south of the Streckenventilout. We had to dig down in some spots, it was like peat moss, moss, and it was like six feet deep, and we had to put stone on top of stone.
Yeah, I get it.
But we now have to fix roads properly. The only way to do that, unfortunately, is either A, bond for it, or have enough money in the general fund to afford these projects. And that's what so many people think, that the town is putting in the roads for developments and stuff. We don't. We don't do anything.
Yeah, I get that, but when you have an influx of traffic, things of that, our roads getting beat down.
Yeah, cement trucks are screwing up the road, they are good.
Where did, who's paying that?
We are having to foot that bill.
Exactly.
But in some instances, like Lenar Homes off there, off, next to the junior high, some of the plan commissioners negotiated $1,000 per rooftop. So, 350 homes, they got 350 Gs, that went towards infrastructure, fix some other roads leading to, and-
So you're saying that there's nothing that this town council can do to make sure that our homes, that year after year, we, that the residents that currently live here, to help sustain our affordability in our property taxes? There's nothing that you guys can do?
We can't, we can't lower the value of your home, if that's what you're asking.
We probably could if we just went-
If this town deteriorates, go to-
Your house will go down in value.
Good, then I hope it does.
All these new homes- We do have a lot of impact fees on them, so I have the list pulled up. An average building permit is about $4,000 off the top, and then the flat rates, sewer tab fee, $500, sewer development fee, $3,500, water tab fee, $730, park impact fee, $1,762, zoning fee, $70, water development fee, $3,209. So these new houses that are coming here, they're paying large fees to build these homes, and these fees are going into our general funds. They're able to pave roads.
They're able to pave roads.
That's how we, you know, fund some of the public safety. So, it's not that people are building these, these houses and not paying off the bat to be part of our community. A lot of our funding comes from all these new developments. So it is, it's a give and take, it's growing pains, and, you know, I don't know what else to tell you.
Well, you gotta slow down.
Yeah.
And then we wouldn't be able to pave some of the roads, we wouldn't have all of these fees going into our funds.
How rough are you?
Mary Joan Dixon, 8711 West 132nd Place. We have a teachable moment right now. Um, Chris, you mentioned all the steps for the DZA and the Plan Commission meeting. Share with them what they can do as public, that they can look for the legal ads and be at those meetings.
Oh, yeah.
You let that hard out, that's why they're here. They wanna be heard, and you let that go out. If you can share about the legal ads, and maybe what public hearings are coming up in the month of April, so that they know that they're coming up.
Yeah, you can check your newspaper, they're available in the newspaper, all adjacent property owners, or all projects that require public hearing. Be knowing what the media times it goes for you.
I don't, I don't get what he gets, though.
Check Facebook, and it's posted.
You guys look at Facebook, it's on there.
On which site?
On the town's Facebook page, they post this stuff all the time.
If they allow it.
These meetings are every-
Yeah, Tom Peter, 13614 Ivy Street. My, my questions, I'll give you guys a break, are more for Chris. Uh, I am a resident of Utopia. Um, I know that they're done, Kugan, I know you know too, they're done digging. Um, my question is, we get a little BS letter from them that says, "After April 10th, we're gonna start doing this, we're gonna start doing that." We've gotten letters before, and it's been, there's been weeks when it's been 70 degrees outside, and nobody's in the subdivision doing anything. Uh, the whole subdivision's in a, you know, chunks of sidewalk missing, the roads are covered in mud. They wouldn't clean up the roads if we hadn't complained and complained and complained. I don't know if you've been out there, and have you actually driven around and seen it?
Yeah.
Uh, last year when they started that, when they took down some of the nice big trees to put in a water main, uh, there was times at the end of the year, I'm raking the backyard with leaves, and it was so dusty when a car would go by, because, I don't know why for the love, but why couldn't they come through and clean up the streets? Why aren't we cleaning the streets? Why aren't you guys telling these people, "You gotta come through, clean up after yourself"? We have people, if you walk that whole neighborhood, you walk the sidewalks, and you look in people's yards, not your easement, the yard, they're stoned. Why is there stone in people's yard? Why are they getting stone dumped on Thursday, and it's Wednesday, and it's still sitting there? It's the weekend, we can't do anything in our subdivision. It's ridiculous. I don't know how you guys hire these people, the lowest bidder, or what you do, but, I mean, it's your, you gotta get it together. Because this is us, I can't even walk my dog around my neighborhood, I gotta go across the street, because it's mine. You got sections of sidewalk missing. There's been sections of sidewalks that have been missing since two years ago, when the town came in and did some water work. It's still missed.
Yeah, and-
And then when they argue with each other, when you ask, "Alan, hey, are you gonna replace this?", they go, "No, well, that's the town's responsibility." Like, what's going on? Like, what's really going on?
Well, we're spending about $2 million replacing all your guys' water lines in Utopia Subdivision. That was, uh, put in in the 70s and so on.
And I understand you have 2, 4, 6, and-
And they should, Tom, I do know that, that company that got that contract, that yes, it is always the lowest bidder.
It is.
It's unfortunate, right?
But why are we out there all- I'm telling you, no, I'm sorry, right.
So we have, uh, we have a town engineer that takes care of the roads, it's Christopher Burke Engineering, and their job is to stay on top of these people that are doing this sort of thing, or is that Niece Engineering doing that subdivision?
That's Niece over there.
Yeah, it's water, so it's Niece. So, their job is to, to be the project manager on our behalf, and this year was a little bit strange, because it was so nice in January, February, I think they kept digging and they made a hell of a mess. Normally, they wouldn't have, they shut the project down for January, February, March, I'm pretty sure, and then restarted once the cross came out of the ground, but this year they kinda kept going. So, as an effort to try to get the project done quicker, that being said, it's a disaster, it's a mess, your subdivision is super flat, and it's, it's, it's going to get better, but we hope the worst is behind us.
And there's money for it, so.
It's gonna be, it's gonna be beautiful when it's done, you have great new water lines, you have no more water-
Well, I got new water, but is, is the water switched over? Did they switch it over to the new line? Because I got a drop in pressure. And if you go knock on door to door, and you ask everybody in that subdivision, I guarantee you three quarters of the time, I'll tell you, since before that project was started, their pressure has gone down. Granted, you're going from 2, 4, 6, 8, or whatever, I don't know what you guys could do as far as bumping it up a couple pounds, I don't know how that works.
And I think a lot of that, you know, there's probably some, some water, I don't know what the new lines, being re-tapped up, a little bit of gravel or something got into the lines, and got into your screens. The pressure is consistently, in fact, is the same, so as far as the quantity of water at the fire hydrants, it's all that is increased, but the pressure is exactly the same as it was previous. And part of the big problem with the whole process was that they had to install a new water main throughout the whole subdivision, and then they had to chlorinate and test and get all that bacteria samples and activate that line, and then they had to go back through the entire subdivision again, and dig up out of these lines and tap them to the new main, so it's a painstaking process. I mean, they're not, uh, you can't just come through and shut it off, and, you know, they had to keep everything live while they're replacing the old stuff, so it's brutal. I mean, it's just, it's one of those things. We were out there, I know the superintendent of the public works out there regularly, trying to scrape stuff off the road, yelling, "You don't tell them the guys to clean up", but at the end of the day-
At the end of the day, you should be out there saying, "Hey, no, you guys need to do it."
If you get that equipment that they have out there, in the space they have to work, I mean, it's, it's a super challenge. I mean, it's, it is-
And I agree, and, and, they got basements, you can brush attachments for the basements, you can regular them.
Right, yeah.
You can do that.
And I agree, there should have been, there could have been some better cleaning, we were on them to clean up and try to clean up even some stuff there to help-
One of the terms like this, I mean, they, they have any hat, they have been-
Well, there's, there's some, but I-
Thank you, Tom, thank you.
It's construction.
I got more. I know you got one more, I got, I got one.
Okay.
So, Chris, my next question is, I don't know if you can answer this, because I don't know if this is a question for you, or you know, or if this is for Alan, because you got it when you guys did the Utopia project. Do we know who the landscaper is that's gonna come through and fix the yards and stuff in Utopia?
I don't, I can get the answer.
Okay, because I don't want it to look like when Parrish was done. You guys spent all this money to build this big, beautiful road, and three weeks after they come in, you got weeds this high. I don't want that. If that's the case, drop some black dirt, I'll do it all myself. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Um, I was not prepared to speak tonight, but, you see, all of these people here, for the reason we are here, what's that supposed to mean? The reason we are here is because we are your people. You can't do anything, and all the government, whatever level it is, without our tax money. We all feel, I'm sure, I'm speaking for all of us, that we do not know what's going on in this town. Now, Ms. Rivera, you said Lawton can do anything on their property because they own it.
I didn't say Lawton, I said the property, any property.
Oh, right, any property, but not mine, right? I had two people interested in developing my poor little 10 and 1/2 acres, and you guys just knocked them out. You want, you made so many, uh, you wanted so many towers, water towers, and, and, and community towers, and you wouldn't let them do wells, you wouldn't let them do anything. But Lawton can, they can take down all their trees, but I can't do anything, I'm not the millionaire.
No, I'm not the millionaire. Was this before the DZA?
Now, let me tell you what happened. They have taken down all these trees. It looks like the Ukraine war zone, and I live next to it. My property is the southern border. The property is 140 acres, that was for 100 years in my family, the Roberts family, going back to my grandfather and, and this property, in order to make it a wildlife sanctuary, a sanctuary for wildlife, I sold it to County Parks and to the Heritage Foundation. Now, I'm gonna do something about this, I, I hope I have the support. They took down the trees on November, or around November 12th, 15th. I think I have a video online, November 17th. My eagles, I have a nest on my property. I'm not supposed to tell this, 'cause everybody comes and looks at it all the time, but, yeah, but you gotta stay away. They've, they've abandoned their nest.
Oh, gee, God.
They are not there anymore. And this was not unusual, because on the 15th of November, I found their new nest further south.
Oh, yeah.
Now, is that a coincidence? I'm gonna have the DNR find this out. Is it a coincidence that Lawton took down all these trees, and at the same time, my eagles moved out? Now, my property, for my parents and my grandparents, was, uh, as I say, supposed to be a sanctuary for wildlife. I have herons, I have eaglets, I have sandhill cranes, they come up to my, my back lawn. I have deer, and, as a matter of fact, and turkeys, yes, I do, yeah, 19 of them, and wild ones. And, uh, the, now I lost my train of thought. This wildlife has to be preserved. Now, we are very, very worried. I'm surprised that Mr. Samstra is not here tonight, he's the head of the Lake County Parks. Uh, there's supposed to be a buffer zone between Lawton and the Lake County Parks. I don't know anything about that, I'm not going into it. But, um, I'm very, very worried, and I'm not sure that this wasn't on purpose, that they took down the trees so soon. I'm going to find out, Mr. Lawton. Come and get me, I've got my own rifle, anyway.
Hey, Brenda, Brenda?
Yeah.
Can I refresh from a council meeting? Colleen said that she heard that the eagles were starting to nest in the trees.
I heard that, but then I was told that wasn't true. I've heard a lot of rumors, there's been crazy rumors.
All right, I just wanna bring that up.
But they are moving around.
Pardon?
They're moving around.
Right.
And they're leaving the area.
Right.
And it's gonna get worse. And I don't know how, if it's, if there's a, what I've read, a PUD of 1,300 homes next to me, now, all right, I don't know.
There's no number of homes, they have a number.
All right, put a, put a thousand boats on the lake for a while, or more, that you have not right now, if you do that. Our lake, this Cedar Lake was once a vacation land, drawing in people from Chicago and all the areas around, so that they could relax. They could water, water ski, water, boat, boating, had a dance, had a midway, right? Um, and now, and a golf course, God, they have golf courses. And I have always been hoping that the town of Cedar Lake would add a golf course.
We, we thought about a council, but it didn't try, but we were trying to get the lake done, and we, we missed out, and that's all there's to it.
Well, this is not a vacation land anymore, this is going to be a settlement.
It's gonna be a suburb, unfortunately, we're too close to Chicago.
What if we stop?
You can stop in the suburbs.
You can stop it.
What suburb do we wanna be, is what we need to be thinking collectively?
We don't wanna-
It's going to happen regardless, growth is coming from the north, it's coming from the west. All we can do is to get all you folks to continue to come in, fill us up with some input, and we can make some good sound decisions.
But we can't get input if they don't input us. We don't know what's going on.
Every, every, you come to the black commission meeting, you come to council meetings, this is a secret.
Oh, wait a minute, those trees were taken down. One morning I got up, and I saw, my, on my house, I'm still allowed to live in my homestead, that was 100 years old, actually, it was built in 1848. And I looked out the window, and I saw them taking, do you know, they took down my trees over the boundary, over the survey boundary? And they were just going left and right and back, and everything, one more, everything was going down. And I didn't know anything about it, I don't even think the people here knew that they were going to do that. So what, the way they're talking tonight?
None of it, I live, that's my best-
None of it, I live, that's my, I live on the, there is no, there is no, we know.
You're representing us.
How would we know? He hires a tree service to drop off equipment and demolish the trees.
Because he has plans and he talks to you people.
No, he doesn't.
Oh, yes, he does.
Brenda, why don't you, so, oh, pretty rough.
Then I would've, then I would've made my wealth, I, I've got wire.
Sure.
Made my wealth and let my buyers do what they want to without even coming here and having you tell them what to do. Each buyer wanted to buy it for half a million. Uh, I mean, really, that, that was, that was unfair and unjust. My father was a lawyer, my grandfather a lawyer, my great-grandfather was a lawyer. I wish I'd been a lawyer. I wish I had never annexed, that's what I wish. Anyway, we have to do something. I don't know what you can do, you say, oh, Lawton can do what he wants to do. Well, I couldn't. I think a lot of these people don't think they can either.
Brenda.
You are representing us, it's our money.
Brenda, he has not come before the plan commission.
Then why could he take down his trees?
They're his trees, we can't.
What about my wealth?
Brenda, we cannot stop a person from cutting his trees.
Then I would've, what would I have, what would you have done if I let my buyers do anything they wanted to on my land? You have punished them.
The difference is.
But you don't punish them, not.
The difference is your ten acres, the people didn't buy the land, but the golf course got purchased, the Hayes family sold it, that's the difference. If somebody would've bought your land outright, then they would've came here and they would've presented whatever they, whatever it is that they wanted to do. If I recall properly from the planning commission on your ten acres, the, the, the planning commission wanted a larger diameter well and so that they had proper capacity for public safety and fire protection.
Alright, listen, I haven't thought that because I don't have millions to do it. But let me tell you something.
Yes, ma'am.
I want you to know, that I have in writing from the attorney of the guy who was going, the last guy who was going to buy the property, sent to my attorney, I have in writing what he said you had required them to do and that's why they jumped the contract.
Following the subdivision control ordinance.
There was, yeah, it was a community tower, it was a tower for the subdivision, it was water hydrants and ten and a half acres, I mean, come on.
Yeah.
Alright, I don't wanna say anything more, I've had it. What I'm telling you, you want to call up me, I'm a capable, yeah? I, I now take photographs for the county park, and so if you see me photographing, add to me.
Thank you, thank you.
You're welcome.
Look at these other people, some haven't had a chance yet.
From the micro post, state your name and address and you can say anyone.
Jeff Field, one, two, zero, one, one hundred thirty-fourth Avenue. Everybody got any, get their water bill today? Who gets it?
Uh, are you guys all running?
I mean, it's, it's apparent, it's, we have an election next month, May, May 2nd, and on the front page of this little bulletin, it's all the town council members and four of you are up for reelection. And why, what's the timing with this? Why, why does it have to be this quarter, this month? Wait, let's.
I wish it wouldn't have been, I wish it would've been two months.
Well, that doesn't know who, who approved this, I mean.
Our staff runs the town.
What about, what about the people?
We don't have input in that.
What about the Republicans, the Democrats that run for office? How come we don't get any Republicans to be like this?
Sir.
I mean, that's what it is.
What, he gets the bulletin, features stuff, whatever they do, we're not privy to that.
Well, somebody got to, you don't approve this? You don't approve the letter that goes out?
No, we do not.
Who writes, who writes our letter?
Uh, mine's administrative assistant writes some of the letter, um, parks, please fire, public works at.
But you think this is fair, I mean, just promoting, telling all, what all the council members, you are all Republicans.
So that was.
All seven of you are on here.
That was an example of what Sheriffville does and we noticed their newsletter when we picked up ours and we thought with the newly elected council member, it would be a good idea to put a small bio so people knew their new elected officials. That's that.
There's a lot of new people in town.
Well, yeah, I, I.
On the block of Sheriffville.
But it's right before the election, we've got an election on May 2nd.
It's a little bit of your.
It's, it's very.
You eat away the, the people that are running against you is paying curtsies.
I mean, there's, there's other Republicans running against you, why, what are they gonna say? I mean, I don't get anything to me, but, I don't know. We got three Democrats running, I know this year.
We're part-time legislators, sir. No, no, we did the best we can. We spent a lot of time, doing the best we can, that's all I can, that's all I can do is.
But there's nothing you can be talking about instead of time, you're in Akron. I mean, stuff's going on in the town.
Yeah, sure, Benjamin, Akron.
Alice Downey, one, four, six, zero, eight, Lee Street. Um, I was here, I believe in October, um, requesting no parking signs along our fence at the South Shore subdivision. Um, we haven't gotten those yet and we also, you guys also promised us a crosswalk from Lee Street to the gate, um, for, to our park.
Where's that now?
Where's what at?
The crosswalk.
There is no crosswalk.
It was like, it was November, I think, so.
It was October of that month, that's what I think.
Something that we need to, Tim, if we can get back and see.
The crosswalk was being looked at by Christopher Burke and we did not want to do it during the winter and came, we did give it very mild winter, so unfortunately there was no.
Well, this is, this is just a friendly reminder.
Thank you.
That I hope we're on the schedule to get that done.
Yes, we're still, still on the schedule.
Getting that, huh?
Our county engineers have been looking at it.
Okay. Before the summer, if we're gonna get it?
Yes, yes, Tim's trying to talk into that.
I, I, we did look into the no parking signs, we contacted, I actually talked to Alice, we talked to the South Shore, we were asking to put the signs up along the fence so that they weren't a bunch of posts littered all down the side of the road and South Shore didn't want to put any signs on the fence.
Part of the problem, we don't want the signs on the fence, is people don't pay attention to them. They do not, they take it for our signs, they don't take it for our house.
Yeah, they have a lot of the town hall fences for summer fest and they put them up and they do the job, they're posting on the fence, signs every hundred, two hundred, I don't know how often, but if you, if.
We already have a sign in front of our thing for Bugaboo's crosswalk, so there's a sign there, you know, a couple more.
There's probably no parking signs, but how many would you, you know what I mean?
I don't know, two, maybe two.
Two, three, I don't know. I don't know how often they should go, but we don't mind the, we don't mind the posts.
So you don't want it on your fence?
We don't want it on the fence because people don't pay attention.
They don't, they, they think it's us.
They think it's the subdivision, they're not a town thing.
Like I say, like I say.
If it's, if it's on a pole and it's put into the town, then, they don't pay, they don't pay attention to no trust, they don't pay attention.
I understand, I understand. Thank you for coming back.
Okay, thanks, Alice.
Angie from Lee Court again, I just, um, wanted to say that when you started the meeting, I didn't even know there wasn't a canine in Cedar Lake, so I'm really happy about that. But one of the stipulations were that they named the dog a certain name. They named the dog a certain name and I don't know what the cost of it was, a dog, was it twenty-four for the program, twenty-four thousand or something like that? How can we find out that when there's a development in Cedar Lake, that we can't make some stipulations of removing trees or something like that? Who do we contact? How would we go about? I understand it's private property and people can do what they want with their property, but as a town, we see the situation that's happening, everybody's upset about the trees, even all of you.
But it's still private property.
Right, I can't, how, how, okay.
We can't, we can't.
Okay, I understand that you can't, but how could we go about meeting the possibility of doing that in the future?
Well, I don't know. That's a good, that's a good point, we have a lot of old growth trees, this is not a total planned unit town like Mariville is. Uh, we could be like the North Shore of Chicago, right? Well, that, when that goes, that whole North Shore, Lake Forest, there's old growth trees and they have laws in New Land that don't allow anyone to cut a tree down bigger than X diameters. And, and, and that is the truth, many of those strict, strict suburbs start with that and they end up where you can't park your work truck in your driveway. And, and who do we wanna be? That's what I'm trying to bring out.
Well, we should, we should have the opportunity.
Do we want? And more input by people is huge. This is such a great night, it really is, this debate, the, the fact that this is your town, these are things that we need input on and we need to hear. I have all kinds of crazy ideas, I spent my whole adult life going through every suburb and all the rural areas.
Okay, so if we have ideas, who do we go to to tell?
And I try to do the best I can to get them out there. And, and so, but our hands are tied, we're part-time legislators, we come here twice a month for either planning commission meetings or town meetings or BCA meetings, I'm concerned on multiple things, we do the best we can, that's all we can do is the best we can? Have, can I personally learn a lesson? Yes. Are there lots of things we collectively, the community, absolutely, please, come back to meetings, give us in fun, please. This is, this is.
Okay, well, I, I've heard numerous times, and I'm not trying to offend you, that, that this is a part-time job, we're in full-time residence and this is affecting us.
No, see, we are, we're full-time residents.
Oh, okay.
I, I do the best I can.
You're right. Okay, so, Shannon, if I can, on the town website, under Town Councils, every one of us has our cell phone or personal phone and an email address. You can contact any of us at any time, all of you can. You go on the website, there's Town Council, click on it, all of our names are there with an email and a phone. So you wanna give your concerns, that's where you start. If it's something we can't handle, we'll get it to somebody else to try and figure out.
There is a town ordinance that requires two new, two inch trees to be planted with every new house, so there's, I mean, that's.
Okay, how did that happen?
One of our, that's real.
And so we should change ordinance by coming to.
We have to tell, we have to put our ideas.
Thank you.
I'm just going to say something, my husband, my, I live at one forty-nine, oh, eight, Houston.
And your name, please?
It's Lynn Conrad.
Thank you.
The house has been in my family, I am now the third generation of its own day.
Yeah.
I live in Oaklawn, Illinois and I come up here. Me and my husband have owned this house for thirty years. The difference in the wildlife in the last couple of years, we hear frogs now on the lake, we've got looms, my husband's out there watching the looms. The eagles fly right at us.
The eagles do fly, yeah.
Yeah, right at us in the house.
Helican.
I smell it, the pelicans.
Helican are here, yeah.
It is a sad thing, you see it go back to what it was when we first got here thirty years ago. I don't know why they were there thirty years ago, but they're here now and we're losing this, we're gonna lose all this, it's beautiful.
You think you're gonna lose it?
I live what you're becoming. I come here to get away from it.
I understand.
I can breathe here, where I live, I can't breathe. Houses are right on top of each other, developers, they're squeezing them in, putting second stories on them, don't do that to here, you guys live here.
Absolutely.
Take pride.
And, and the queen in the lake is gonna help bring you more wealth.
Oh, it's, I still have my five hundred dollar pledge to drag time.
Yeah.
In my attic, it's gonna make you different. When we come up here, we're actually thinking of selling that because we're coming up to what we're trying to get away from and that's the really sad part, just keep that in mind.
Thank you. Margaret Parker, seventy-four, thirteen, one hundred thirty-sixth quarter. How many homes are gonna go into the subdivision across Morse Front Farm?
We, we don't know, we don't have plans.
I don't have any idea.
I'm told the plan submitted, we don't know.
The traffic on Morse right now is unmovable. We live in that community, that's gonna impact us.
No, I understand.
I think one thing that I hear tonight, we want transparency, we wanna know what's coming, we wanna know how, what you guys are gonna do, what the plan is, once we move forward. Once we.
No, you will, you'll be.
Really, the place for that is the plan commission, 'cause it's gonna hit there first.
That's where it starts, that's where it'll start.
It's gonna hit there first, that's where you're gonna have, and you have no idea how many homes are gonna go in.
No, thirteen hundred and over, I have no idea what it is.
No clue.
When will you have any idea?
We don't know when he'll come to the plan commission, but when he comes to the plan commission, we'll know exactly, we'll know how many houses, we'll have.
The one across Morse, seven hundred, front of our court.
That Broad Farm property was, was approved as a PUD twenty plus years ago and there was, there was a number of lots approved for that subdivision, you do know.
But you got it, you remember.
Just tell, well, have somebody look it up, John, you got staff.
Ma'am.
Tell them the truth.
Greg, please hit the gavel, you're not even on the, hit the microphone, please sit down, I wish I was the president, I'd gong you.
You go, you, you already, boy.
I would call you in that gavel saying, sit down, sir, but I'm not, what?
You're not, you're not telling her the direct information.
Margaret, this is for, Margaret, earlier tonight, Bob Carnahan described that there's RT, RM, R2, R1 and I think B1. I have no clue how dense that is, I have no clue.
And I recite.
And until he comes to a plan commission with that old twenty-year plan that Mr. Parker just said, I don't have a clue and that's the truth. How could I possibly remember something that I've never seen plans for?
Again.
I didn't make no sense that people make accusations.
We don't have.
Margaret, my phone number's on the web, my email's on the web, please call me anytime, anytime, I'll try to answer any question I can, if I don't get the answer, I'll call Chris, that's how this, that's how this works.
I think the concern is that I, I've been there for years, the traffic. I'm not there, I'm just a regular.
My understanding, we hired, and what we, when he comes, I park in, to connect, I had to keep part there by the, the chamber, all the way to the townhouse. So in those, in doing that, we hope to have a little bit wider road, make it a little bit better.
Yes, yeah.
Nice to try and help.
Sorry about the yell.
Yeah.
Jessica Morgan, one, three, nine, oh, six, Houston Street, and I'm here to, let's try and do something to keep the natural beauty of, of living here, that's, you know, that's one of the great things, I like it.
Yeah, absolutely.
Those trees, I, those trees are, are, I, I was in tears when I drove by.
We all, my family.
We all.
So why can't, and that's done, there's nothing we can do about it.
That's right, you're right.
And why can't we do, proceed forward like you were, you were talking about, we need to, let's put those rules in place so that never happen. If those rules were in place, then those trees would still be there. So can we do anything to get, to get some rules in place so that as we move forward and as the growth continues, some of that stuff is protected?
Yes.
And Angie mentioned, mentioned the same thing, the, the, we stay a summer.
Yes, yes, she did. Thank you, thank you very much.
Great, I think a lot.
Anybody coming? Probably coming, seeing that, come out there?
Yeah, sure.
So I just wanted to come up, I wanna start out with, keep it a little bit light, I know it's about a contentious meeting for everybody, both behind me and in front of me, also to the side. Tim, when you stepped out, I thought for sure you were going to turn the heat on. I mean, are you trying to freeze us out in here or what?
Oh, I have, I have to turn the fan, I can't do that.
Oh, Mary Joan, if, I got that space, I'll let Morris, if the car.
Terry, Terry.
They're willing.
Terry?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, I know we moved on and covered a lot of ground since, since Chris's explanation, I, I wanna backtrack a little bit on tonight's meeting, um, to Chris's explanation of the process, the process of, of, of a project of this magnitude, of how many times they come before the co, uh, I'm sorry, the staff, working with planning, working with the management, working with, um, engineers, both ours and, or, I'm sorry, both Cedar Lakes and the developers, I, I, I would imagine it would take months. And now, I don't have the kind of money that everybody's saying this gentleman has, I certainly would never build a, I, I know the, I know the engineer you was in and I know what the engineer wanted to charge me just for the little project I wanted to do that just keeps getting shot down. But the, the, the idea that somebody would go through that much, that much time, that many meetings, that many drawings, that many renderings, that many architectural meetings, lawyer meetings, you know, I mean, I'm guessing that's gotta be two hundred thousand dollars before he even stands in front of you for the variance to change the zoning. Now, who would spend two hundred thousand dollars for a variance to change zoning without a nod and a wink to say, yeah, go ahead and spend the money because you're probably gonna get it?
No, a lot of it.
Well, there's nothing, that's easy for you to say, but I'm talking about green dollars. People don't spend that kind of money without some kind of notion that they're gonna be able to get what they want. You're saying, Bob, it's trying, we're not trying to save people from the mortgage, we're trying to save a community from being overrun with roof tops. So in fact, Julie, I'm glad you spoke up because you had mentioned earlier tonight about the impact fees, that is one time. Each and every one of those fees you mentioned are one time, but the cars that were parked in those garages for the rest of the time are driving down the streets, impact and feed all the rest of the time. Now, I come from Lockport, Lockport, Illinois, in fact, that's the other side of the communist border wherever Chief Mills at. See, uh, I, uh, Lockport, when I moved there was seventeen thousand, we're at thirty now, I saw it. I saw the decisions being made, that this is gonna be the greatest thing since the world, we got vital jungles, we got power-hilled streets that look like alleys, we got people because the houses were built so poorly, because they were so close together, because there were so many in subdivision, it became affordable housing.
Is that what we have here now?
Well, you have a lot of that here right now, Mr. Sharp, because it was built according to jobs so hard where there was goat paddock on the street. Now, what, what I'm trying to explain to you is that you guys have the decision power to say no, you guys, only seven people in this whole town, I said it once, I'll say You guys, only seven people in this whole town. I've said it once, I'll say it again. When that variance comes up for, for change, I guarantee that behind closed doors, you're all gonna say, well, he's already spent so much money, he's come out and paid it yet.
Behind closed doors.
Do you hear me? Terry?
Come on.
There's not gonna be a damn thing behind closed doors. Well, hold on. Are you saying that there's no meetings with Chris's staff behind closed doors about how I'm behind closed doors? Behind, when you go in a meeting with staff, you're sitting behind there. There's nobody up here. You're, you're not there. Nobody's there. So if they are deciding to put, to put in RT over the top of R one, that's being decided behind closed doors.
You're right.
That's, that notion is being discussed without any recollection of the people who are attached to it, the people that are gonna suffer from it. What's he gonna do? Put a, uh, lake access and, and attach to the, the backside of some of these houses? What the heck is going on? Why would you wanna take a hundred house sub, uh, uh, allotted amount of land, and it's already R one, uses fifteen thousand square feet per, per lot? I think it's, uh, fifteen, twenty-five hundred on a house, Chris, for R one? Those are gonna bring in large tax dollars. You take one lot in R one and turn it into four rooftops of, of, of RT or R ninety-nine, whatever the hell you wanna call it. The money's not gonna change, but the cars will change, the kids in the school will change, the lines of the supermarket will change, the lines of the gas pumps will change, the roundabouts will keep coming, the street lights will keep coming, your taxes are gonna keep going up, and God forbid, when these wells all get attached, your wells are getting shut down because they, you're gonna go pump down there all the way.
Terry, who are you talking to?
I'm talking to everybody, Mr. Sharp, with somebody who needs to start talking about that you live here.
I'm home.
Can I say something one more time? Name and address, please, again. Uh, Charles James, third, seven six zero nine West Hundred Forty Place. Uh, one of the things, uh, Mr. or Mrs. Sheben here said was, uh, about the dredge project and things are gonna come in the future. Well, I think that's imperative that we don't rush things because once the lake is dredged, the property values are gonna go up. We're gonna be more attractive, and we're gonna have people that are willing to buy bigger lots and build bigger houses and pay more in taxes to help everything. We don't have to rush this and put a bunch of little reeky dink cookie cutter homes that are gonna bring everybody's property value down and overcrowd the entire neighborhood. We're not rushing anything. And I think another thing that needs to be, really, that, this is the first time I've been to this. I, I'm a, I go to union meetings every month, so I'm used to seeing the kind of format a little bit different. But, um, I think what everyone here, that I can see that's getting upset, is upset about is they're hearing a lot of, well, we can't, we don't know, there's, there's no accountability. You know, we just said, oh, there's no closed meetings, but twenty-five minutes ago, we were talking about things that, oh, that happens on the other side of the wall.
That's how, that's how the, that's how the town, town managers meet with twenty people a week, maybe, and then maybe out of that kernel of, the point I'm making, that idea that comes to us.
You, you were all elected to run the town. So you should all know everything going on at the town at all times.
It's impossible. He's a full-time, expensive manager.
Cause he gave a report to the town council on a regular basis.
Until it's a planning commission meeting, we don't care.
Well, then maybe, maybe the people that have a full-time job should be responsible for providing oversight as to what they're doing in their job to the town council so that when you come into these meetings.
We're not blindsided.
You're not blindsided, and we're not arguing with you over that. It, it, to me, it's just unacceptable. You guys don't know enough about what's going on.
But we really don't. We really don't know. How can we even choose those?
We don't have that on it, and didn't, you, whatever you did, you retired.
What I'm saying is.
How do we know?
We don't need to be given any variances to make more houses now because the more attractive Cedar Lake gets, the more people are willing to spend for a bigger house where it can have a yard, where it can have a swimming hole in the backyard. We don't need to put a bunch of little townhomes in and a little bitty, the houses like they have over by Yuki, the little city homes with an alleyway in between. I'm just saying, you got.
No, I don't have such a time.
Maybe the full-time people, you know, we could, we could incorporate it. You gotta pay them hour overtime. Come up with a report to give you guys an idea of what they're working on at all times so that when you come into these meetings, you're informed, but you can give us answers, and we can all get out of here within three hours without being high blood pressure.
Yeah.
I think that's better for everybody than that here is better for everybody.
You're right.
And then maybe, you know, even think about having their reports, publish them online so we can look it up, so everybody can see.
But again, until it comes before a planning commission and we follow, we have state statutes that we follow within the zoning ordinance and within the VZA, and we have to follow the law. This can't just be nonsense. And if there's about ten pie in the sky ideas that are happening, I, I don't even care. Until it comes to the planning commission, then I care. Then I wholeheartedly care.
And then all the companies will come and remonstrate against it.
Like, we tried to do, uh, the Midway Gardens about, I don't know, ten years ago, eight years ago. We came up to the renderers, and we did a boardwalk, and we did a pump, and people thought we were gonna take their homes. We were just trying to get some enthusiasm. We were just trying to get some bigger thinking of what a town center could look like.
Oh, I understand.
And it feel like.
And I think that, still.
Would the socialists think that? In town, I'm just saying that, you know, we should have an idea of what everybody's doing in the town. It shouldn't be, uh, at a meeting, it's, oh, hey, we approved this two weeks ago, and everybody has a big fit because nobody knew what was gonna happen until it came from the other side of the wall.
And again, my idea, Charles, is my idea. Until it comes in the planning commission and seven members confess the things that we get presented.
With the public.
It's, it's, now it's real.
I understand that, but I think everybody behind me wants to, their idea is, we wanna know what's going on.
We have to go through the planning.
You're right, and it, it's, it's hard as it may be, it's hard as it may be, Charles, for everybody to believe, until it comes to the planning commission, we know nothing. We've not seen anything from all three properties that were mentioned. We don't know. We really, really don't know.
You can look at the zoning, and you can look at that. He has not said anything.
Like I said, though, they're gonna pay more money for it.
I agree.
The lake dredges. There's no reason to rush. There's, there, we definitely have enough leverage to sit there and wait three, four years until that point comes. There's no reason to be hasty and rush a bunch of little homes that are just gonna ruin the area.
And unfortunately, the economy's just going on now, of course.
Thanks, thank you.
So I think you're good.
Chuck Tucker, six one zero zero, West one thirty-sixth Place. Uh, I think everyone's talking about the thirteen hundred homes on the east side. You guys haven't heard about, you know, come with the number.
I'm not sure what it represents.
I don't know where the thirteen hundred is.
Well, there's a letter from Jack Slater from IDAM dated February twenty-second. And then also.
For south, for the south of Lakeside?
For the south of Lakeside connecting to Robbinses, that.
He, that they brought into our planning.
We got letters.
Yep.
For, that's gonna connect, says, the proposed project shall provide service for a hundred forty-six single-family homes. And then also it says, the proposed project includes twelve-inch diameter and fifteenth diameter PVC SDR dash twenty-six. Sanitary sewer to provide capacity for the flow from expected future development that includes approximately thirteen hundred single-family homes. Says right there.
But they gave it to the planning division, Chuck.
But I'm saying thirteen hu.
That subdivision gave it to the planning division.
Right, but they, uh, it was proposed.
Proposed, but we never approved anything.
But I'm saying, it's saying thirteen hundred, you know, single-family homes. You gotta figure, two cars.
Twenty-six car cars.
At least two cars per house.
Uh, the.
And he said it was too dense.
The, the hundred and forty-six houses you're talking about.
Lakeside.
Yeah, and that's already, and they're waiting for us to get water there.
Correct.
And he did bring in a concept plan, which John keeps telling me that hasn't been officially given to us, and that was a.
No, it wasn't. It was given since September.
And it was for five hundred.
Five hundred and ninety-six houses.
But not thirteen hundred.
Right, but the letter they've got from IDAM, it says thirteen hundred.
They bought the property south of that farm, I guess. I don't know.
That's what we're talking about. It's, it's a grant.
Hey, listen, Mr. Cooper.
It's, I mean, that, that property, that pipe is, is sized for that whole area where the sewers can gravity flow, which is property that's nowhere near in town. It's, it's that whole, like, nine hundred thousand acre property that's from a hundred forty-first East. It's not in town. It's not annexed in town. The pipe is sized to accommodate those potential thirteen hundred houses, just a number based on lakeside density and whatever, but that, that is what that number has come from, just so they can put in that intersection line to accommodate that in the future.
But we're not gonna supply sewer for Crown Point.
No, no.
And there's sewer lines right off by Rita Room.
It's all that property, which potentially in twenty years, it's gonna be flowing through that pipe possibly, and that's the number that they, they took all of that property that's topographically, that, that could drain by gravity into that line and accommodated the size of that pipe to.
Right, they said thirteen hundred single-family homes.
That's where the thirteen hundred number came from, which is by the number of units per acre and whatever. It's just a, it's just a planning number. That's not a.
But half of that is lakeside, according to what Randy Memeier.
Exactly. Part of it is lakeside. We have a five hundred, five hundred units to the south of Lakeside.
Well, that's half our, right there.
That's five hundred of the thirteen hundred.
That's half of it.
And that's not, you, like you said, part of fuel, a cost, is what I'm saying.
No, same.
We don't have the street.
And ironically, I'm just gonna say one other thing. You know, Brenda stood up here and complained that this planning commission and everybody didn't approve her ten-acre parcel, cause they wanted twenty lots that were forty feet wide to put in that neighborhood and build small houses on small lots. It was denied because these people that were on the planning commission didn't think it was good for the town, and then ironically, everybody's sitting here saying that everybody wants to put in ten-foot lots. That's something that nobody's even been here for, but she, they brought a plan, and it was denied because they didn't have water, and they had too many houses. You were on the planning commission. Too many houses, not, not, no water. Um, they did exactly what everybody is here, is asking to be done, and everybody's here.
We have water.
That is true. That's why it was denied.
We have water. We've got lots of water. I'm surprised nobody would.
But you're, you're about to, it's denied, denied because.
And I have it in writing. I have it in writing.
Okay, Brenda, thank you.
Well, if you said that, I can see what I want.
And you have. Thank you. Thank you.
All right, I have one more thing. Pamela Devlin, point one three oh three, by Hubert's St. This goes over where the new development's going by the middle school, across from the middle school. I do a lot of walking in that neighborhood. We need to address safety of the children. When you come out of the middle school and you've got children walking, there's no sidewalks.
We're working on that.
There's no sidewalks on this side or, once you get over the tracks, then it becomes.
The railroad makes it difficult for us to do some of those things. It's not just the railroad, but it's partly the railroad.
Okay, I just wanted.
You can't touch the railroad. It's a sacred property. Even if we're safe, they don't see the cable.
I, 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 I used to work for the railroad, and I would one hundred percent back them up.
And that's fine, but get it, get it, get sidewalks going to the track.
We're working, yes, we're working on it.
You're working on it, okay.
When, when we, uh, expanded a hundred and thirty-third on the west side of town, uh, the railroad told us we had to have, uh, a helmet on, we had to have safety glasses, we had to have vests, and I'm retired from Ford Motor Company. I had to get my steel-toed shoes, shoes out before they'd let me walk across their property.
I'm just, I'm just checking, cause now that Brett's farm's sold and that's developing, you've got a lot of, a lot of kids that's.
A lot of kids, yeah.
Kids walking, right, right, and whatnot.
And we're trying to get crossing gates at a hundred forty-first and also a hundred thirty-seventh, as well as sidewalks there, and that's been in the works since our previous, two time, minutes, striders ago, and this guy's gonna get us across the finish line, cause that's dangerous. We don't even have crossing gates, and we've got kids living in Winding Creek one and Winding Creek two, and now Beacon Point east and west. It's, it's horrendous.
Thank you. Very good work. Thank you very much.
From, not Indiana, Illinois, it is very dangerous.
Yeah.
I mean, I almost, I know you people don't like people from Illinois, but I'm not half any. But I mean, I did that the other day, and my husband goes blind. I mean, it's, because there were no gates. I'm so used to it.
Yeah, I understand.
It's a matter of time till you get these stupid Illinois people.
Dave Perry, one sixty, one thirty-four sixty-three Beach Place.
I did.
I think that everybody's here to get your assurance that moving forward, that they won't get these PUDs with these forty-foot lots. Um, that's what they don't wanna see in this town, and really, you seven people have control of that. So I think everybody's here to have your assurance that that's not what you guys want in this town.
We don't, I don't.
It's definitely not what we want.
And I, I believe that.
I believe.
I believe that. And I think that that's what they're looking for, is your assurance that that's not what, where this town is moving to.
Sure. You gotta remember, most of the development that's being built and has been built in the last ten years was pre-two thousand and eight, except for some of those subdivisions that I described that we negotiated with them to have less density. So I think, you go look back at anyone, look at, look at the records, you know, and even Chuck, you know, Chuck's admin about R one, and he voted for a lot of those PUDs too, because we had to negotiate, but it was all done above board, right up here on this bench, out in front of people. Until it makes it here. Dave, you know, until it makes it up here.
I do know.
I can talk about what Dave's gonna build over there, tear album trees down, and build up this and build that, until it comes here, it's rumors, it's hearsay, it doesn't mean anything. It just doesn't, you know.
I, I, I understand that. I do. And, and, again, I think everybody here just wants to hear from you guys saying, we don't want that in our town. We don't want these small lot lines. I don't think anybody here.
I don't. I, I am concerned. I'm concerned with zoning, though, with the property across the street, because that's different zoning.
And, and I know you guys have no control over the rumors that are being said.
No, we don't.
And, and, and everybody that's here tonight, I, I think should be here when these come before the planning commission.
When it comes up, yeah. We wish they were.
First, and third, Wednesday of other month is the planning.
Thank you, Dave. Anyone else have a comment? Say you don't.
Hey, you can go online and watch.
Okay, Cheryl Parker, seven two two seven West Hundred Thirty-sixth Court. As I had brought up, can be, I believe, the last, uh, February town council meeting, I did ask about impacts from fees. We do not currently have them. I did, I still don't see them online, so I'm assuming that.
No, we don't have them. We don't have them yet.
Uh, but you guys were talking about possibly doing that. Has there been discussion on that? Okay, and what's the outcome at this point?
It's still being discussed for getting cost estimates for what it would take to implement.
Okay, because as it was mentioned, and I'm looking at Ralph, um, not to, you know, point at him, but just as an example, he's got all the listing fees, which you just reiterated too, about the building permit, all that stuff. There is no road impact.
No, there's not. There is.
And with, even though we don't know how many homes, we do know that there's six hundred going in with shilling, and, uh, Latin will eventually build on the front farm and eventually down here. You have a two-lane road going all the way down that can't handle traffic now. And so I would like to see that, uh, looked into, so eventually we're gonna have to do a third lane or something else.
Or whatever, yes.
I know the developers put in roads in the subdivisions or the PUDs, but not on the main road. And you can't, for the state code, you can't just build more roads with that impact road fee. You have to have it.
There are some, yes.
You have to have impact from them.
There are some restrictions.
Okay, so that's what I just wanted to find out.
Okay, well, thank you. Thank you. Still being worked on. Thank you.
Hold that hand. Yale Brandon, seven zero one four, West Hundred Thirty-ninth Place. I've been in the town most of my life, and my kids played in the park here. They played soccer, swam in the pool. My grandkids played soccer here. I've come over here and volunteered. I was on the park board, volunteered for Summer Fest Committee, and, um, it's been a part of my life, this park here and the access to the lake. Um, there was a time when there was a great master plan that, um, it was gonna move the town complex, and this was being talked about by, uh, Bill Lansky at the time, being sold to a developer. And my concern is, with a little bit of lake access that the residents have, I'm never gonna live on the lake. I live away from the lake, but I have access, and I do come down here to the park and use the park. And I would like to see, I know that in two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve, the parks were deeded over to the town, and now that we have a park board, I'd like to see them deeded back to the park board and possibly put into some kind of a land trust so that no one can deprive us of that, so that a development can go in. This money that's being raised from these park impact fees, if they're not building parks in these new subdivisions, it can be used to improve what we have now. And at one time, they talked about a band shelter here. I was down here for the symphony, a great time to get together with the community. Um, the market day. Market day is a big hit. I've been down here to the market days. I love going. The last market day of the season, there were cars parked all the way up, um, against where the fence is. The last market day of the season, there were cars parked all the way up against where the fence is, and that area is no longer gonna be available to us. Is there a plan to diminish the lake area here and the park? I was told at a meeting a couple months ago that this wasn't even a park. This is a town complex. And I wanted to stay a park.
I understand.
If I could, a town manager, low got a grant from Dean and Barbara White, he's gonna go after a grant through there and try and get us a new band shelter.
Well, yeah, we're working on a lot of things, Karen. We're actually hoping to actually eliminate some of the buildings that are here now and open up more lakefront for everything.
Well, I have seen that one time, an updated master plan that had commercial property all along the perimeter, and I just don't ever wanna see that.
I don't think you will.
Yeah, that's the direction.
I wish the beach could get bigger for the kids, 'cause that beach gets mixed in the summer.
I do too.
Well, too, the 10-foot is not enough.
It's so cool.
So, there's a lot of good ideas. We just have to, you know, park board's new, our budget's new. We've got, it takes time to move forward on the ideas and the things you wanna do.
I understand.
And when you do it, you wanna do it right. You don't wanna put something in that's gonna fail in five seconds.
But maybe the town attorney can do something to protect the parks that we do have that are on the lakefront. There's only three of them, and there's a lot of residents here that don't live on the lakefront. And if we can do something to preserve it, I think that'd be great.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any more public comments? Seeing none, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you.